Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Paulsboro City Council meeting for June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Paulsboro is committed to being a welcoming, diverse, and equitable community where all people can access tools and opportunities to improve their quality of life, allowing them to reach their full potential. During its meetings, the Paulsboro City Council will use this lens to inclusively view its discussions and actions. And Mr. Taber, would you do the land acknowledgement, please?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Paulsboro is located on the ancestral lands of the indigenous Sioux Kwamish people, for whom this land was known as Tuk Tuklots, or the land of the vine maples. Every part of this soil is sacred in the estimation of my people. Every hillside, every valley, every plain and grove has been hollowed by some sad or happy event and days long vanished. Chief Seattle, eighteen fifty-four.
I'm seeing people wanting their, uh, the volume turned up. Are we all the way up? Oh, the volume all the way up? Yeah. The people aren't hearing out there, so can we turn it up? Okay. With that, would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing on our agenda is to review and approve the agenda. The agenda was updated a couple of days ago, and it's got, you have a purple thing in your TO folder of the new agenda, and that is the agenda we're going to speak to this evening. So with that, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve the agenda as updated.
Second? We have a motion and second. Mr. Taber?
Taber, aye.
Lived, aye.
Eckerd, aye.
Crowe, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Thank you, Council. And now we're moving on to public comment. If you have comments for the Council, please step to the podium. You have three minutes and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Uh, my name is Jay Lawrence. I'm also the Chair, Commissioner, Chairman Commissioner for the Port of Paulsboro. So sorry I missed the meeting the other evening. I have some family matters to take care of, so. We have a lot of people that are going to basically be discussing a few things, but there was a couple of items that were missed that I just want to state and bring up was basically an economic impact that the Port of Paulsboro does bring into the downtown area with monies, et cetera. So this is the numbers from two thousand and twenty-four was we had four thousand seven hundred ninety boats that came in to our port, and this does not include the anchorage. With that, an average travel party is two point eight persons on the average per boat. And these studies are done by the Washington Economic Development. The next one was expenditure per travel per day. They expected over two hundred dollars per boat vessel that comes in every time. So if you times that to by forty-seven hundred, that's a substantial amount of money that's coming into the downtown district for all the stores, the restaurants. So the port is doing as much as they can to help be part of this community. Um, average guest mortgage fees, we collect about eighty-seven dollars per day. Uh, since we are a big fuel depot, a lot of boats like to come here because our fuels are usually cheaper. On this expenditure of five hundred dollars per day on the average, so each boat is spending about eight hundred dollars a day just to come in to our city to enjoy what we have and to present. So with that direct impact, that is about three million eight hundred sixty dollars a year that we brought, and that was just for two thousand and twenty-four. And that was a slow year. We had our marinas down for quite a while. Uh, the new breakwater was just opening up. People weren't aware of it. And these last events, we, for Viking Fest, we were full. For Memorial Day, we were full. So with that, you can imagine what the numbers are going to change for this coming year. So I just wanted to say hi and thank you for what you do, but we do have a lot to work on, and I'm looking forward to our October, November meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Port Commissioner.
First, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Lauren Heitzman, and my wife and I have lived on our boat in the marina for the over ten years. I'm here tonight to address the issue of the city annexing the seven parking spaces that the marina presently holds. Seven parking spaces represents less than three percent of the overall city parking downtown. The city, if the city takes them and turns it into public parking, uh, it's going to have little or no effect on the parking in, in the city of Paulsboro. On the other hand, those seven spaces represent thirty percent of the parking that the marina has down at the marina. This is going to have a great effect on the boaters and the port staff. There are other things that must be considered. When the port orders fuel for the fuel dock, they have to back all the way down, uh, to the end of the lot. If there is a car or a truck that is not pulled in all the way, then the truck cannot get down there to where it needs to drop the fuel. So therefore, the, the port doesn't get the fuel. Uh, another thing is that the fuel truck is there for between forty-five minutes and an hour. So if there's any cars parked in those three or four spaces down there, they're going to be blocked for an hour. On the other side of the lot, if someone parks incorrectly, they'll be blocking the dumpsters. And the garbage truck will not be able to get in to empty the dumpsters. So you can see that there's several issues here to consider. I have some petitions with me tonight with a hundred and twenty-five signatures on them that my, myself and my, my friends have gathered, and I would like to thank them for doing that. We also have, uh, well, I, what I would like to do is I would like to leave these petitions with you if you'd like, and then if I could get them back, uh, sometime tomorrow.
Just leave them with the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Comments from citizens?
Hi, my name is Nico Jensen, and I work at Longship Marine here in downtown Paulsboro. I've been a port tenant for ten years. As a downtown small business owner, I'm asking the city to take stronger, more proactive steps to support downtown businesses through improved parking enforcement and accommodations. We've done everything we can on our end. We've built an e-commerce site, opened up an eBay store with international shipping, and rented nearby space for operations. Still, our core customers are locals. In their midst, never-ending boat projects with thirty-one marinas in Kitsap County and very few marine stores left, we remain a critical hub. But parking is our bottleneck. Customers literally can't get to us, and we talk about parking every single day. Here's where we need help. Enforce existing time limits on one- to-three-hour parking to encourage turnover. We don't have an overnight parking problem. Enforcement should focus on daytime hours. Ticket illegal parkers, especially repeat offenders who block the striped safety zones around Anderson Parkway. This creates dangerous visibility issues and forces delivery or emergency vehicles into the active lanes. Enforce the thirty-day anchorage rule. Boats anchored long-term are contributing to overcrowding and misuse of public space. Many associated vehicles take up prime parking. This is also a key moment for the city to prevent boats from becoming derelict. Regular movement keeps them maintained and reduces future taxpayer burden. Reevaluate summer event permitting at the waterfront. These frequent events close key parking lots and block the flow, especially when unannounced. Today was a prime example. And business drops drastically each time. Until we have a shuttle or alternative parking support, please consider moving more events to other parks with better parking capacity. Leverage developers. The paid garage at the Sophie was a missed opportunity, and now the Eliason is doing the same, charging one hundred to two hundred dollars per month for tenant parking, not to mention barely enough spots per unit. This encourages residents to park on the street instead. With two more developments breaking ground downtown, the city has a chance to do better. Let's use developer interest in downtown to improve infrastructure. No breaks or exemptions without meaningful public benefit. We love being part of Paulsboro's downtown, and we want to thrive, but without meaningful parking solutions, our growth is capped, and plans for opening our new event center in this area seem futile. Thank you for thoughtfully considering these points.
Well done, Nico. Thank you. Comments from citizens?
Hi, Council, Mayor. My name's Aaron Wenhols. As a thirteen-year tenant to the Port of Paulsboro, a downtown business and property owner in historic downtown Paulsboro, I have been witness to and part of much change, some good, some not so good. I stand here with two key points to talk about, starting with parking. Parking has been a growing problem for all of downtown, and it continues to worsen. The city has likely spent more money on parking studies than just digging into the root of the problem and enforcing rules and law that is already in place. There are many issues associated with parking, and most could be mitigated by just enforcing existing rules. Developer builders of downtown multifamily buildings, the city requires these developers to include one space for each unit, hardly enough to begin with, yet the city allows the developers to charge for each parking stall, causing tenants to choose the cheap route and park in public spaces. Second point is the city-port relationship. Can't we just work together? The city needs the port, and the port needs the city. The port offers water-based parking for folks that come to Paulsboro because they love the town and wants to bring their money here to shop and eat. Thousands of people arrive by boat every year. Get over this petty parking feud. Stop shaming the port with things you don't understand like port bathrooms, and work together to make this a healthier and better place for all parties involved. Taking back a few parking spots from the port is petty and hurts the port far more than it gains the city. Get over it and work this thing out with logic and common sense. The big picture, and I leave you with this. The city not enforcing their own rules is slowly stifling small business. Where is your downtown without small business? What would Paulsboro be then? Just another strip mall suburbia that people come to for Walmart and Home Depot? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Aaron. Comments from citizens?
Hello, my name's Nicole Winatka. I am the, uh, Port of Paulsboro Guest Mortgage Admin. I don't have anything prepared, but I feel the need to speak, uh, again, in regards to parking. Um, the employee and permanent mortgage parking spaces are vital to our operation, um, not only for the employees and for our permanent mortgage residents, but also for our yacht clubs. Um, over Memorial Day weekend, we checked in two hundred and sixty boat nights. That's a lot of people coming into town. We have rendezvous booked every weekend through October right now. Sometimes, last weekend, we had three rendezvous in one week. We had Port Towns, and we had Shilshul, and we had the Nordic Tiger rendezvous. Uh, every spot was full. We're practically squeezing people in with shoehorns. Many of these customers that come in are also handicapped. They come in with vehicles. They need a place to stop. They also come in with supplies. They need a place to unload. So yes, it's an issue with the fuel for fueling our fuel dock, for the trash, for our yacht clubs, for our rendezvous, for our employees, for our permanent mortgage. Just wanted to make sure I added that. Thank you all very much.
Comments from citizens? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we're going to move on with our agenda. Um, the next thing is Mayor's Reports and Council Comments. Mr. Taber, how are you?
Uh, besides seasonal allergies, I'm great, Mayor, and, uh, no comments from me for now.
Thank you all for taking the time to, uh, come and speak to us and make comments. Um, we appreciate it, and I don't have anything else. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. I'm guessing some of the other folks in the audience are going to speak in a little bit at the public hearing. Um, I'll just say I absolutely agree with and have been endorsing what you've been saying about enforcement, if you've been watching. I think that is the key to all of our, uh, issues. We have to absolutely enforce the rules, so you will continue to hear me beat that drum.
Thank you, Mr. Eckerd. Cam?
Uh, thank you for sharing your comments and insight, and, um, nothing else to say for me. Thank you.
Karen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thanks, uh, to everybody for coming down tonight. Uh, I need some more information about the alleged seven parking spaces we're trying to take away from the port. Um, not aware of a lot of that, um, so I'm not sure if, uh, what's going on. Uh, we, we could use an update on that. In terms of enforcement, uh, just so everyone knows, uh, we had a robust conversation just last week uh, about the need for enforcement. We sent out an RFP to, uh, some outside, uh, companies to, uh, uh, we're weighing to possibly provide that enforcement. Uh, it's really kind of looking at, um, whether we want to do the enforcement by hiring an outside contractor or hiring an employee. Um, some more on that to come, but, uh, I, I think we're moving in the direction that you all seem to think we should be, so, um, just want to make sure that everybody's clear about that. Um, and, uh, I guess I, I wasn't aware that the city, uh, had a poor relationship with the port. Uh, I thought we had a very constructive meeting just a few weeks ago. Uh, we covered some of these issues, particularly the derelict boat issue. We had a police officer, um, report on what we are doing, our marine unit is doing, to, uh, ratchet up enforcement on the derelict boats. Um, so, um, I, I'm sensing a bit of a communication problem here. Um, so, um, um, but I will continue to listen. I appreciate everybody being here to, uh, make sure we're moving in the right direction. But I think if, uh, any of you have been following our recent meetings, we are acting on all the, uh, many of these things that you're bringing to our attention, and I hope that you will continue to, uh, uh, to follow along. Thank you.
Hey, go ahead, Doug.
Nothing tonight.
Yes, Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to address housing and growth just briefly. Uh, I know my colleagues on the council and you, Mayor, we've been talking the last year and a half or two about the accessory dwelling unit program that our own Heather Wright, as city planner, led for the other four cities and county. And, uh, today in the Kitsap Sun newspaper, I'll hold it up, top of the fold cover story on access, ADU, accessory dwelling units, the ability to build small housing, uh, and have minimal impact but provide additional housing. I am amazed on some social media and in conversations that I've noticed recently, and I, I don't think it's just recent. There's a, a whole subset of people that believe this council and mayor control the rate of growth in town and that we're just pro-development and we want to hit it. Uh, number one, we have no such authority to control growth. Uh, that remains with the state and then filters down to the county, and at the same organization, our city planner Heather Wright led the conversation on ADUs, population allocation is made. I will suggest that if we do not provide a certain modicum of housing, including the accessory dwelling units and some of the apartments that were cited here tonight, the state has already made it clear in Olympia that they will remove the authority from the cities and the state of Washington to control their own zoning. We are not the final arbiter of growth. We have to manage it. It's apportioned throughout the county to the cities, and the state, the last two sessions, Mayor, as you know, have been watching the ability of cities to address housing for growth and have threatened to remove our zoning. So the point I want to make is if we do not accommodate smartly and appropriately and in character with our town, the state has made it very clear they will remove all our authority to govern growth and housing and take it on themselves, and then you will see what heavy-duty growth looks like. It behooves us to have to take the steps we are, including the accessory dwelling unit program, to accommodate what's been assigned to us, but I'll conclude by saying, I only wish we were as powerful as a mayor and a council, as some of the conversation out there is, that we're in charge and we can wave our hand and either have growth or stop growth, and it is not that way. So I just need to clarify that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Stern.
And just real quick to add to what Mr. Stern said, the intent in Olympia, if they take local zoning away, is to reduce parking requirements, to make it even less per unit than what we have now. So just know that. So one per unit, it would be even less.
Thank you, Mr. Eckerd. Okay, um, my turn. Uh, Jun- Juneteenth, and I have a proclamation that I would like to read. Whereas on January one, eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, setting in motion the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, it was not until June nineteen, eighteen sixty-five, that it was announced to those still enslaved in Texas, quote, "The people are informed that, in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free." And whereas, celebration of the end of slavery, which became known as Juneteenth, is the oldest-known public celebration of the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and celebrates the successes gained through education and greater opportunity. And whereas, on a larger scale, celebration of Juneteenth reminds each of us of the precious promises of freedom, equality, and opportunity, which are at the core of the American dream. And whereas, our country's Juneteenth Freedom Festival will take place on Saturday, June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at Evergreen Rotary Park in Bremerton, the People's March will start at ten fifteen A.M. at Fifth Street and Pacific Avenue. All are welcome. Now, therefore, I, Rebecca Erickson, Mayor of the City of Paulsboro, Washington, do hereby proclaim June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five as Juneteenth in the City of Paulsboro, and encourage all citizens to join with me in recognizing this important initiative. Um, I'm sorry that I didn't make the Jun- Juneteenth celebration. I, I'd had a little accident and was unavailable to, to be there, but I understood that everything went very well, and, um, it's a it's an absolutely important thing that we remember this date, um, for the well-being of all of our communities. A couple of other comments. Um, the seven parking spots that they brought up, the port brought up tonight, belong to the City of Paulsboro. They are located on City of Paulsboro property, and they are being used by port employees. Um, the idea being that we want employees to park away from downtown so that the people parking in downtown can be shoppers and frequent our businesses. So I, I just want to make sure. You can look at the parcel search if you don't believe me, the Kitsap County parcel search, and look at the piece of property that you're talking about. That is City of Paulsboro property. Now, the part over on the other side, the southern part, uh, where the, the Liverbores live, that is port property. But the port piece right in front of the D dock and the bathroom, that's City of Paulsboro property. So let me make sure we're clear on that. Um, the next thing I want to say is I thought we had a great meeting with the port. I see the port as a really pivotal partner to city government. You know, we're, we're in this place together. We work collaboratively. We all succeed. You know, no finger pointing allowed. We have to work together, and I think that that was the spirit we had at the meeting, is that we listen to one another, and we really do want to work collaboratively, because if the port succeeds, the city succeeds. And if the city succeeds, the port succeeds. It, Liberty Bay is a little space out there. We all love it. So let's work together and figure this out. Um, and finally, I, I have a couple, not now, sir, and finally, um, I have a couple other kind of personal announcements. Um, I will be discontinuing my office hours on Saturday, as of immediately, as of right now. Um, I used to have a, a policy of open office hours. Every Saturday morning, nine until noon, sat up on second floor. Anybody could come and talk to me. I did that for fifteen years. I started in June of two thousand and ten. It is now June of two thousand and twenty-five, and I am no longer going to do that. I am starting my retirement phase. I will be done in the end of December. I will be retiring from this position. It's time for me to be with my family, and I've given up every Saturday for fifteen years. It's time that it ends. And I have to admit, the part of it is what happened in, um, um, Minne- Minneapolis, Minnesota, where, um, those people were shot. I've been scared two or three times, sitting up there by myself, where people have come in and they've gotten hostile. Um, our police don't like it, never have liked it. Um, there's, it's not really a particularly secure thing for me to do. And I thought, you know, why tempt fate? I'm almost done. It's, it's time for me to move along, so, uh, no more office hours. Um, and I want to thank you guys for your understanding. Now, I always pick up the phone. My office phone is mapped to my cellphone. So if you call my office number, it'll come through to my cellphone. I always pick it up. If you want to talk to me, give me a call, and I'll set up an appointment sometime during the work week. So with that, I think that's about all I have tonight. So let's move on with our agenda. Uh, we have board and commission reports. Any board and commission reports?
I'd like to, just for, uh, board and commission. Um, Jay, I'm, uh, I, I met you once at the Port of Paulsboro meeting. I'm the liaison to the port. Um, I'd love to get together outside of port meeting and council meeting, and we can get together, maybe get coffee or something. Um, so send me an email, or I'll send you an email. Um, are you, are you Lawrence? I'll send you an email. Let's, let's, um, connect on a, have a coffee, and we can talk about, you know, how we move forward.
Okay, any board and commission reports? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to the consent agenda. All matters listed in with the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the city council for reading and study and are considered to be routine, and it is just one. It's the payables, and I entertain the motion for approval.
Mayor moved to approve Consent Agenda Item A.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Mr. Taber?
Taber, aye.
Lived, aye.
Eckerd, aye.
Crowe, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Thank you, Council. And now we're on to the business agenda, and the first is the public hearing ordinance number two thousand and twenty-five oh-nine, two thousand and twenty-four Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, and this is Ms. Coleman. Nicole?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the public. Um, I have just a short presentation, a condensed version of one that I provided you two weeks ago, but given that it's a public hearing, I thought it would be helpful to have that on the record during the public hearing. Um, as you know, we're here tonight for the public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-four Comprehensive Plan Update. Um, Council is very aware that we've been working on this since two thousand and nineteen in various stages, um, with a lot of the work beginning in two thousand and twenty-two. The council has been involved at, uh, numerous, uh, points, um, including thirteen city council workshops in two thousand and twenty-four. Um, so that's, that's a lot of workshops for one agenda item. Um, the Planning Commission, uh, also held thirty-one workshops to review the comprehensive plan. Um, and then you also had five joint meetings, um, various, um, other, uh, touchpoints that we came to you. Um, we had the workshop, uh, on June fourth, uh, and then tonight we're here for the public hearing, which is the final step of this long process. A reminder that the comprehensive plan isn't done within a silo of just looking at, um, Paulsboro itself. Um, it lives within, um, various bubbles, including the Washington State Growth Management Act, which, uh, Councilmember Stern um, alluded to with his council comments about how we are allocated growth, um, based under the Growth Management Act, and that funnels through, um, the multi-county planning policies under- And that funnels through um, the multi-county planning policies under Puget Sound Regional Council. And then additional work is done at the countywide level, looking at countywide planning policies. And then our local comprehensive plan is required to be consistent with all of those documents um, in terms of how we grow as a community. There are some pieces that we can um, fine tune and make more Paulsboro, but there are certain requirements that are non-negotiable, um, starting at the state level all the way down. As a reminder, Paulsboro is required to plan for uh, five thousand six hundred and forty-six new residents to twenty forty-four, um, four thousand new jobs and nineteen, over nineteen hundred new housing units. So within the plan and within our appendices and our technical documents, you will see how we meet those requirements and how we are, how we have existing capacity within our current city limits to meet those numbers. Uh, the Planning Commission spent quite a bit of time on our vision statement, so I wanted to read that out loud because I think they did a lot of really good work and it's a really great vision statement for our Comprehensive Plan, which as a reminder, um, for the Council, anyone doesn't know in the audience, is our twenty-year vision for our community, how we will grow um, as a community. So Paulsboro is a vibrant community distinguished by its unique location on the shore of Liberty Bay with access to natural beauty and urban amenities and historic small-town quaint character. Situated at the crossroads of Puget Sound, Paulsboro recognizes that our past and future is connected to the natural resources and and systems we depend on and enjoy, as well as the local and regional cultural and economic relationships that that we have developed over time. We envision a future in which our fiscal and environmental health are in balance and wisely stewarded. Paulsboro is an exclusive community, aware of our connections to each other and respectful of our differences, where civic groups, local government, families, and neighbors work collaboratively to continually maintain and improve a quality of life for all. So this vision statement is located in Chapter One and it sets the stage for the next thirteen chapters of the Comprehensive Plan. And all of the policies and goals um, written lead back to this original vision statement of what we want to achieve as a community. A reminder about um, a lot of additional work that went into the Comprehensive Plan, which includes our functional plans. These are how the system, how our city will meet the needs of our population and jobs and housing units, while also providing water, sewer, stormwater management, transportation. Um, and so at the state level, you're required to plan for um, your infrastructure with your growth. Um, and so we have six, this is only five on here, but we have six functional plans that show how the city will meet the needs um, in terms of the infrastructure. There was a robust public engagement throughout the process that started back in twenty twenty-two, all the way through uh, last summer was our last event that we held. Um, and we've continued to provide updated information on our website throughout the whole process. But we were out in the community a lot and we continue to be out in the community this summer even without a large project. You'll see us out there again. Uh, the work doesn't stop after tonight. Um, as part of the Comprehensive Plan Update, the state requires us to also update our Critical Areas Ordinance, which deals with our streams and wetlands um, and geotechnical hazardous areas. That is due by December of twenty twenty-five and um, I will jump into that work next week and um, get it done by December. Um, Carla Bowden here is working through the summer on some uh, updates to our impact fee uh, ordinances. Um, and we'll be bringing that forward hopefully uh, late summer, early fall. But the timeline is still to be determined. We have another slate of amendments um, that we'd like to bring forward in the fall and I'll be working on those through the summer, which includes a variety of items that we've talked about, but weren't necessarily needed, require a little additional work um, from the amendment package that you see in the next agenda item. Um, and then Heather, the, will be working at the regional level level with uh, KRCC on regional center planning. And then we have a climate change element due in twenty twenty-nine, which is a state requirement under the Growth Management Act. Um, and we actually have two interns this summer from Western Washington University that are working for credits to do that work for the Climate Change Chapter. So they just started today and we're looking forward to seeing the work they do. And then in twenty twenty-nine, we have a five-year check-in and then we probably start it all over again. Um, we just keep going. Um, so yeah, so the work doesn't end, but um, it's a nice uh, point that we can recognize the work that's been done the last several years. Um, I did not do all this work alone, so I don't get the opportunity to do this very often. So I wanted to say thank you to those on the screen. Um, Heather took on the Economic Development Chapter in specific, which is a really robust chapter. Carla took on Transportation and Capital Facilities, which I don't know how I, we would have got done without that. Um, and Tiffany Simmons is our GIS and she made a lot of maps for us. And then our engineering team, we would not be here without them. Um, they did the work for stormwater, sewer, um, transportation. Um, that's how we make the city work, really. So we thank them for all of their work. Um, and then also, um, just on a personal level, I had a lot of night meetings the last several years and my husband is a really good cat dad and I appreciate that. Um, so. And that's it. I just wanted to give a short presentation. Happy to answer any questions you have about your five-hundred-page document in your agenda with all the links. Um, but that is the conclusion.
Why don't we go ahead and open up the public hearing and listen to public testimony? And then we can do that piece and then we can have the conversation here at the dais, okay? So I'm going to go ahead and, hold on just a second. Open up the public hearing at five thirty-five for the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan. Um, if you have comments for the Council, um, you can step to the podium and you have five minutes. There are several names that have signed up. The first is Edie Lau. Edie, you have five minutes.
The Matt Mayor, that in the current Comprehensive Plan is mapped across our home. This future street is intended to give Paulsboro Meadows a second way in and out for everyday use. The burden of providing that access was laid directly on our property. Following much discussion, the Transportation Chapter of the draft updated Comprehensive Plan now incorporates two key changes related to this street segment. The first is the policy to avoid mapping street extensions through existing occupied structures, parks, and open spaces. Consistent with that policy alignment of the future street that previously sliced straight through our house, now follows the property boundary. These adjustments provide incremental relief. I thank staff for the considerable time they spent considering the matter and I thank the Council for the time that you've given to deliberating on it as well. One final point I'd like to make. We had hoped that the road extension could be eliminated altogether, in part because city staff and the Planning Commission in twenty nineteen gave the go-ahead to Paulsboro Meadows, knowing that the subdivision was designed with only one regular access point and a secondary emergency route. Their eyes were wide open to this aspect. Yet, one reason staff gives to retain the planned road is to provide superior emergency response. During a city council workshop discussion on December eleven, twenty twenty-four, it was suggested that Paulsboro residents are at risk of life-threatening delays in emergency response because of a lack of street connections. Alarmed by this possibility, I contacted the fire department and I spoke with the Deputy Chief of Operations. He said he was unaware of any prolonged response times in the east side developments. He said the layout of Paulsboro Meadows meets the fire department's safety and access criteria and that their main concern is access to hydrants and having enough room in the cul-de-sacs to turn their trucks around. I found that reassuring and I just wanted to share that information with you. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, the next person that signed up is Irene Bowie. Irene?
I think she wanted to comment on the second one.
Oh, the coding. Just for awareness.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm speaking on the second part. Is is it?
My mistake. Two different pieces of paper. Thank you very much. Yes, you can. That's okay. Would anyone like to speak on this particular um, series of presentations? The Comprehensive Plan. Last call. Therefore, we are going to close the public hearing at five thirty-eight. Now, Council, comments? Questions? Mr. Eckert and then Mr. McVeigh.
Thanks.
Gary.
Um, I just want to thank uh, our wonderful staff. Uh, Nicole had the names up on the uh, graphic. I won't repeat them all, but I I know uh, tonight is the culmination of a very long period of work and a lot of work by a lot of people. Um, and um, I just want to you to know that this Council appreciates all of your efforts. Um, I think it's a, it's a really robust and comprehensive um, plan. And I uh, I I am confident that it will lead us uh, twenty years into the future. Um, Mr. Stern touched previously on some of the growth requirements uh, that we have. Uh, the population targets that we have been given, Nicole shared on the screen as well. Um, they're a little scary sometimes. Um, and uh, but I think that uh, we're doing our very best to try to accommodate that growth in terms of people and jobs. Um, and I have no doubt that we will continue to do that. So I feel um, I I think we're fortunate uh, that we have um, this plan to guide us. Uh, and the state of Washington should know that we are doing everything we can uh, to live up to our obligations. Um, and I think with that, uh, I I guess the other thing I want to comment on is just I I know the robust public input. I appreciate the efforts the planning staff went to um, with farmers market visits, with coffee visits um, and other things that they incorporated into gaining uh, public feedback. And uh, I was at at least one of the farmers markets where they were there and there were a lot of people who wanted to talk about planning, which was sort of kind of amazing sometimes. Uh, so uh, I thought that was pretty cool. Um, and then I just a note, uh, I think we're very fortunate to have a former Planning Director Carla Bowden still involved. She has a independent contractor, uh, provides a lot of really important institutional memory. And um, uh, I I want to thank Carla for that. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Mr. Eckert, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, um, so something kind of touching on what Ed said earlier. You know, I I also see a lot of comments quite often talking about growth and what we should or shouldn't do about it. But what always interests me is the things that go along with those comments like, well, you don't ever build any roads and you don't ever build, you know, more healthcare or more schools and all. And the the number of conversations we've had and the number of things we've done on those exact topics, I have lost track. Um, and so I wanted to point specifically to the functional plans that are part of this, where pretty much every one of those infrastructure things that people say we don't ever take into consideration are incredibly and in graphic detail covered. So to say we don't plan for those things, they absolutely are part of the plan. They're required to be. They're deeply considered. So please look at those um, and and understand that that is all part of the plan. Now, some we can't control. We can't control how much healthcare there is. But we've been working, the mayor and Ed have been working for a decade on improving healthcare. So it's all part of that. Um, I also want to thank the staff. The amount of work you all put into this is unbelievable. And and people have no idea. I also, I want to thank Edie because people often say, you know, well, the city should do this and the county should, the county, the council should do, but they don't ever actually engage. Edie engaged and the plan changed because Edie engaged. And and changed in a couple ways that I think are really, really positive. When I read the changes, I said, of course we should, you know, we shouldn't plan to put a road through somebody's house. Yeah, that makes absolute sense. And the staff engaged with her. They got, they changed it. They rewrote it. It made absolute sense. And so when community engages and they engage early, that's when we can change things. Coming after something's been decided and saying, well, why'd you do that? That doesn't, that doesn't lead to change. It's engaging early. Um, and I will say that the first time I met with Edie and we talked about this, she said how great the staff was and engaging all this. Um, and Ashley said she was probably a pain, but I don't, I told her that wasn't true. But you all were great in dealing with the folks in the community that came in about this. So um, thanks again on that and uh, just great work. I think this is going to be a great plan for the future and obviously we'll have to look at it again, but you know, that's how it works.
Okay, so we have Mr. Stern and then Ms. Livedal.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three questions, one for Nicole, one for Heather, and one for Carla. And thank you all and the staff that supported you. And I look forward to this arriving at the Puget Sound Regional Council and getting it filed. Thank you. So my, my first question for Nicole is how is population growth determined and then allocated in the state of Washington for Kitsap? And then the Paulsboro is at the bottom of the heap for that. I'm not asking for an exhaustive discussion. But could you just share with the audience that, sitting here, it might be listening? How is population growth determined? And then how is it allocated and dribbles down to Paulsboro?
So the allocation um, really starts at the, well, for us in terms of when we start to engage is at the regional level with PSRC and the Puget Sound Regional Council. Um, they are allocated a certain percentage of population for their four-county region, which is Pierce, uh, King, Snohomish, and Kitsap. Um, and then, so they allocate to each county a certain amount of population based on um, size of your your region, size of your county, the population growth you've seen. If if you're, if you've met your population goals from the previous cycle, there's a variety of things that go into that that analysis. And then that county is evaluated at the county level through uh, KRCC, the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council. So that's where all of the elected officials and there's also a a Planning Director's Committee that gets together and works through how to allocate that population to the individual cities and the county. Um, and so there's a bit of a negotiation going on based on how much capacity you have to. So prior to that, each community does a buildable lands analysis and a land capacity where you evaluate how much capacity you have to take. Um, and so then it's a little bit of a political game as well and Heather engaged in that more than I did um, and Carla before her. Um, and then, and ultimately it's decided and it's ratified by each each jurisdiction, how much population you will plan for. Again, and I think um, uh, Councilmember McVeigh said it best, that it looks really scary because that's what you have to plan for. I, by by no means do we think we'll actually get over five thousand new residents in a certain timeframe. Um, but it's always possible, but that's what we have to show we are planning for. So if um, in terms of sewer and water and transportation and housing units. Um, so that's how that process starts up high and then trickles down to Paulsboro at different levels.
Thank you, Nicole. And Heather, if you would. I'm pretending for a moment that we had vested in us that power that people sometimes think we have. What would happen if Paulsboro refused growth?
Well, we would not be in compliance with the Growth Management Act and our comp plan would not be adopted and we would be at risk at receiving funding for our transportation improvements and other improvements from the state.
Well, more than that, we'd get sued. Every developer would come at us. And so it would be even worse than the legal consequences of it. We would not be following state law. And so therefore, we would open ourselves up to the liability of litigation. So it it's, this isn't a choice that we're doing here, okay?
And that's without touching, Mayor, on the market impact, that if we stop building and people still wanted to live here, the prices of all your properties would shoot up. Never mind the property tax. Anybody who's making a working living would be priced out of this town. Supply and demand squeezed out, but that's separate from the government function. And lastly, Carla, uh, could you discuss in sight which part of the Comprehensive Plan in light of our state mandated, state law requirement to take our share of population and then provide for that? Uh, which document specifically addresses our well-studied, thoughtful, and painstaking approach such that we maintain the character of this town in light of that demand?
The Comprehensive Plan as a whole embodies the vision statement as read out by Planning Manager Coleman uh, during her presentation. The vision statement establishes the tone and the direction that the city
and the direction that the city will take in growth and meeting the state mandates. It is a vision born by the community and refined over years. The first vision statement that we prepared as a comprehensive plan in 2008. Those council members here will remember that this vision statement has been refined and updated and reflects as the city has grown. The vision statement is carried through during the different elements of the comprehensive plan. You see it in the land use element, the community character chapter, in the transportation, parks and recreation, our natural environment chapter. It is implemented through our development regulations, which is your next public hearing after the comprehensive plan. And that dictates the built environment, how development comes in and how it's going to look. How Paulsbow remains Paulsbow is by the care and thoughtfulness that has been reflected by the planning commission, the community, the staff and the city council and this comprehensive plan. I'm proud to continue to be part of that. So thank you, Councilmember Stern.
Okay, so who's next? Britt, go ahead.
Just a, just a quick comment. I echo what my colleagues have said and thinking staff. I'm curious. All the outreach that you did was amazing and impressive and you all spent so much extra time out of your weekends. Coffee with a planner and the farmer's market, as was mentioned. Is that something other places are doing? Did you get an idea or did you just decide?
Well, the coffee with a planner came out of a pint with a planner, but I don't drink beer. I love coffee though. So there are some examples that I found elsewhere. I do think, I don't want to say that we're above and beyond, but I do feel like we went a little, a little further in some of our public participation in the more intimate type of conversations we had. I felt like a lot of jurisdictions spent more time online with online open houses and things like that. And whereas I feel like for Paulsbow, what works for Paulsbow is more of those one-on-one conversations.
I can tell you it does work. I mean, I've only ever heard positive feedback from people who've had the benefit of sitting across from one of you and you make us very proud.
Thank you so much.
We, just a second, when it's about 52, 5,400 people, correct? That's what, okay. And what is our calculation for household size? About two, three?
Two point three seven.
So it's about 2,400, 2,300 houses?
You're asking me to do math?
Yeah, no, I mean, it's 5,400 people and each household is 2.4 people. So it's about half of 50. No, no, how many more houses? How many more houses? So it's about 2,02100. So the reason why I bring this up is that there was some social media exchanges going on about, you know, how we're growing so quickly and all the houses that are coming in and, you know, the, the changes in the city. Now, this is 2,100 more houses in our existing footprint. We're not talking about expanding the city limits. So it's 2,100 more houses in 4.74 square miles. Okay, so everybody think about that for a second. That's going to be some changes in our community. So the real key and the interesting part about this is that we've absorbed this increase in population over time and we've managed to keep our character. And I think we still can, but we need to be real cognizant of growth pressures and what they do. So I say this, you know, as a mayor leading office, you, you need to be careful about the land use decisions that you make as you absorb that population levels. So, okay, go ahead, Pam.
I just wanted to briefly comment and then pass it to Gary to make a motion. I, I do appreciate the city's website. And, you know, I often refer to it. I appreciate the links that's provided. You know, it's, it's definitely wonderfully laid out and easy to navigate. I also appreciate, you know, and learning about all of the elements required of the Growth Management Act. I appreciate the, there's a historic timeline available of the GMA that was adopted. And then in 1990 and then in 1995, the GMA amended for best available science, which I believe speaks to, you know, what was alluded to regarding why are we required to do this? And what is the, the data or science behind it? So I, I just appreciate how the city has provided the comprehensive plan on the website and the various links and pathways that can get you in the weeds. But I, if I bite off one particular topic or subject like land use and stick to that, it is a wealth of information there. So thank you for also having that work reflected on the website.
Thank you, Pam. Mr. McVeigh, would you like to make?
Sure, I'd be happy to make a motion. Move to approve ordinance number 2025-09. An ordinance of the City of Paulsbow, Washington, adopting the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update pursuant to the Washington State Growth Management Act, Chapter 36-78 RCW, providing for separability and establishing an effective date.
Second, okay, we have a motion and a second for the updated comprehensive plan. Congratulations. Hard work. Thank you. Any further comment? Mr. Taber?
Taber, aye.
Libdal, aye.
Eckert, aye.
Crowe, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Thank you, Council. Congratulations. Okay, so now we're moving on to Public Hearing Ordinance Number 2025-10, Spring 2025 Code Amendments, Comprehensive Plan, State Mandates and Cleanup. I like the cleanup part, Nicole, cleanup.
And just a quick note that during your break, Heather made, Heather had our comprehensive plan logo put on a cake. And so, which is adorable and I love it. So please feel free during the break to have a piece of the comprehensive plan. Yeah, so thank you. So the next public hearing is for the Spring 2025 Code Amendments. And as the mayor alluded to, I'm not going to give a presentation, but I'll just walk through a couple of things. There, it is a amendment package that includes three types of amendments, including code cleanup, which is something that the planning department tries to do yearly, if not every other year to fine tune some of the mistakes or just some of the just little fixes we can make to make the code more readable to our community and our developers. And then we also have a couple more legislative requirement amendments. As you all know, there've been a lot of legislative amendments in the last several years. And we're continuing to adopt those as we have these code amendment packages in front of you. And then the last piece, but obviously not least, is the Development Regulation Amendments related to the Comprehensive Plan update. So as part of the Growth Management Act, that your development regulations are required to be consistent with your comprehensive plan goals and policies. And so these amendments make that possible, make it a consistent document with the comprehensive plan. You had your workshop on June 4th and you received your staff report last week. And so here we are for the public hearing. And I know there's quite a few, there's a few people who would like to speak to this item, so.
With that, we are going to go ahead and open the public hearing for the ordinance number 2025-10, Spring Code 2025 Code Amendments, Comprehensive Plan, State Mandates and Cleanup. And it is 5:57 a.m. The public hearing is now open. We have three people that have signed up and the first one is Irene Bowie. You have five minutes, Irene.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Irene Bowie, I'm a resident of Paulsbow. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Viking Park residents. And I'd like to recognize that a number of them are here in the audience. They've come to the meetings through this process and, and this means a lot to all of us. We're here tonight to thank the planning staff, the planning commission and you council members for developing and including the manufactured home park overlay zoning into the code amendments for Paulsbow's comprehensive plan. This overlay provides security and peace of mind to the residents of the city's manufactured home parks and protects this existing type of affordable housing. With its passage, Paulsbow joins a growing number of forward-thinking communities in Washington and throughout the country. And I look forward to sharing this passage with the Washington chapter of the Association of Manufactured Homeowners. And thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Irene. Public comments? Any more public comments? This is a public hearing. Oh, okay, that's right. I'm sorry. Jan Kagan? Jan? Somebody named Jan Kagan? Okay. Yeah, how about William Archer? William Archer? Is there William Archer here? Okay, I'm going to just open it up to the floor. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding the code amendments? Hi. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Janet Cragan.
Okay, Janet, and hand your materials to the clerk, please.
So I've got three. So it's like Britt and Becky and Doug, and then they can share around. I just wanted to show you what you're protecting. Because you're here and you're inside a closed room. And you may never have driven through Viking Park. And you have this picture in your head of what a manufactured home park might look like. But you may never have been there and you may not know. And it's a lovely neighborhood. And people walk their dogs together. People go to the mailboxes together. People stand on street corners together. People visit together on front porches. In fact, people watch out for each other. I have neighbors who, when blind, isn't put up in the morning by a certain time, they go check next door to make sure that their neighbor is safe. It's such a lovely community. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart that you are making it safe for us to stay there. We all appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Janet. Okay. Public comment. Last call, anyone? Come up and speak, sir, if you wish. Okay, all right. I'm not seeing anyone else that wishes to speak to this item, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:02. Right, Mr. Noel?
Yeah, good evening. We live in a great place where people want to be. And it's great to see us participating together as a community to guide our growth as both embodied in the comprehensive plan and in the code and regulations that the planning team have put together. And as we do that, you know, we think about where we're going in the future. We, as a community, get to help inform and control that investment in our community. The vast majority of what we see around us is privately held. It's private investments. It's investments in our community to bring new retail, new restaurants, new residential units. Yet we, as a group, get to help guide what that character is and going back to that opening statement. And I guess I'd just say I'm very proud to be part in a small piece of the team that helps make this. Because we, as a community of 13,000, have created quite special place that, you know, I think we're going to enable this one, helps enable us for the future. So thank you to everyone that's participated in this process.
Thank you, Mr. Noel. Mr. Eckert?
Yeah, thanks again to the staff. You know, this is, this is the hard, nitty gritty work. You know, taking the, the new laws and figuring out what we got to change and, like you said, the cleanup and all that kind of stuff. So yeah, thanks for doing all this work. I'm glad we were able to, to do the overlay, to do something. Because as the mayor said, you know, 21 new homes in less than five square miles. That, that's, that kind of pressure is going to create some, some kind of change. And these are three properties that someone's going to look at because they're, they're fairly large and not developed in a way that the density is looking at in the future. So I'm glad we were able to do something to, to protect them. And as you said, it's, it's a form of affordable housing that we're, we're not going to get any new ones, certainly. Not the way the GMA is laid out, not the way the city's growing, not the way the growth has already occurred. What's left to develop is not, it's not big and it's not flat. So we're not going to see new manufactured home parks cropping up. That won't happen. So I'm just glad we were able to do this. And I just have one question. The fall package, will that be when we see back about, or we touched briefly on changing the ordinance on parking as far as fines? Is it the plan to come back at that time or are you going to do that separately?
I can speak to that. That is going to be done separately. Yes, so it should be in the next few months at the longest. So you see that.
Mr. Stern and then Ms. Crowe.
Thank you. And on my remark, if I could, Mayor, ask you at, after I complete it to help me out and clarify, I'm going to talk about what's not on the code amendments tonight, but is vital to this community and, and goes through a similar process. And those are the fees that we determine called impact fees that affect our traffic in streets, our parks, what's go to the schools and so on. We adopt those after careful work and research and determining a level of service to maintain the character of the town. So my point of the remark is that Paulsbow has the highest impact fees in Kitsap County. And we do so deliberately. There are others who have very low impact fees trying to encourage development by lessening the burden of costs and fees. Our attitude is different. It is, if you want to live here, and as Councilman Newell talked about, a wonderful place to work, play and grow. Then we want you to carry your fair share of the burden and that the level of development you're doing meet a certain standard. And if that proves to be expensive, then perhaps Paulsbow isn't the place for you. It is an inverse of what you would think we were doing to try to secure as much development, as much growth as possible. Mayor, could you help me to elaborate on our impact fees?
They're high. It also, it drives up the price of housing. But, you know, the attitude is that growth pays for growth. In other words, if you want to come and build here, you have to pay for your own impacts. And so the developers pay for schools. They pay a general facilities charge for sewer and water. They pay an impact fee for streets. And what am I missing? I think that's it for parks. That's right, parks. So they, it's, you, you have to pay money in order to come in and build in this community. And because you have to pay for your impacts. And we take all that money and they're dedicated to the piece that they've paid for. In other words, the park impact fee goes to park impacts, which is park, park acquisition, capital acquisition. So yes, they are hard. They're not as high as some cities. Some cities are, are really high, much higher. But some cities don't choose to charge anything, i.e. like the city of Seattle, for instance. So it's, I think it's a way to keep the development community honest and say, you know, hey, if you're going to come here, you have to pay for your own way. One other thing I want to say, as long as you threw the baton over to me, Mr. Stern, is I call Viking Park the only gated community in our city. That's how beautiful it is. And it is kind of gated, you know, you kind of have to. And it's a beautiful place to live and you're lucky to live in there. It's very, very nice. Okay. Who's next? Ms. Crowe?
Thank you for sharing the pictures. It is gorgeous. There's some tremendous green thumbs that are in Viking Park. It's beautiful. I am excited about the overlay. I do like for solutions that helps to protect affordable housing. It just makes sense. I also appreciate as well as Ms. Edie regarding the previous hearing that was spoke upon. I also appreciate, as well as Ms. Edie regarding the previous hearing that was spoke upon, early engagement, as Rick shared, for folks to speak up and get involved prior to something is, you know, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. It is really hard to roll back on things when months and months and months of work have gone into something. So thank you for coming, speaking up, doing it civilly. It was a pleasure to meet with Ms. Irene. I'm sorry, I'm one of those first name people. And hear your concerns. So this is exciting. And thank you also for the hard work that you guys have done in reference to that.
Okay, any other comments?
I could make a motion, or one of my colleagues could. I don't want to dominate the motion world. Okay.
Motion, go ahead.
All right, all right. Okay, I think I have it up here. Yes. Move to approve with, move to approve ordinance number 2025-10. An ordinance of the City of Paulsboro, Washington, amending sections and adopting new of the Paulsboro Municipal Code as outlined in Exhibit A to this ordinance, providing for severalability and establishing an effective date.
I second Councilmember Gary McVeigh.
Okay, so we have a motion and second. Is there any further conversation or discussion regarding this?
I have one other comment. This is the other drum I'm gonna continue to beat. If we want to maintain the character of Paulsboro as that we all do, and we want to respect the work that the staff has done, we will hire, we will fund and hire a code enforcement officer to make sure it all gets maintained at proper levels.
Any other conversation? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Tabor?
Tabor, aye.
Lipton, aye?
Ackerman, aye.
Crowe, aye?
McVeigh, aye. Noel, aye. Stern, aye.
Thank you, counsel. Well done. Well done. And the final business agenda item is 2025-2026 Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And this is Jeff. Go ahead, Jeff. Welcome back, Jeff.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council, and our friendly citizens. I do not have 500 pages for you. We are just, we are representing the 2025 and 2026 Lodging Tax Advisory Committee representatives and the slate of those representatives for your consideration. For our community members here, there are five voting members on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, known as LTAC. We have, the chair of the committee is our very own Councilmember Gary McVeigh. We have a representative, Ashley Wolchuk, from the Fairfield Inn and Suites. She's staying on. We have a brand new representative who was interviewed by our Assistant City Administrator, Finance Director Deb Buer, and Councilmember Gary McVeigh recently. And that's Stephen Evans from Hotel Scandia. Victoria Luke from Hotel Scandia stepped down. She is being reassigned to different projects out of town. And that interview with Stephen went quite well, is what we were informed. We have Greg Enright from Cultural Arts Foundation of the Northwest. And lastly, Kathy Forsy from Viking Fest Corporation make up the five members. LTAC is supported by staff. That includes Lursa Campbell, Deb Buer, Lynn Heino, and myself. We're nonvoting and we may help make sure that things are running smoothly and supporting the committee. So in front of you are the committee members. And we do this annually, so council has a chance to see who is on that slate and has a chance to review and concur that this is how they like to move forward with the slate of candidates.
Okay, so this is a nomination for to complete the LTAC committee and I'd entertain a motion unless there's any questions. Okay, go ahead.
Motion to approve the proposed representatives for the 2025-2026 Lodging Tax Advisory Committee LTAC cycle.
Check.
We have a motion in a second to approve the slot of candidates as presented to the LTAC committee. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. Mr. Tabor?
Tabor, aye.
Lipton, aye?
Ackerman, aye.
Crowe, aye?
McVeigh, aye. Noel, aye. Stern, aye.
Thank you, counsel. And now we are having a break. There's a cake with a comprehensive plan, something on the top of it. Is that what I hear?
Just.
Okay, 6:13, we'll be back. What, give us 15 minutes, 6:30? 6:30, 15 minutes. Thank you.
Mr. Gelder.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you. It is a wonderful day. And just to add my thanks and kudos to staff for the monumental task of the comprehensive plan adoption. When you think about, this is a multi-year process. It's adopted in one evening. It's, we talked about the years that it took to actually happen. But this particular update really was in the emergence from COVID. I think we kind of forget about that and in just the complexities that COVID had on our ability to do that type of community engagement. And I think they really tackled that with a lot of grace and style. So kudos to staff. One of the things I wanted to follow up on after the last council meeting, we did have an opportunity to chat with council about council members Eckert's question or concern about continued residency for council members after their election. We started with council member Eckert's suggested language. But what has sort of come back to us is that it's that probably it's not as simple a fix as one might think it would need to be. So if council wanted to go down that path, we would probably have to create a standalone process that is separate from the Public Records Act to actually verify council member residency. And then also include some type of enforcement procedure for what happens if someone's determined to not no longer reside within city limits. So it's possible to tackle it, might be a little bit more complex, might be could be a little bit more challenging in terms of just going through the process of getting that and enforcing it. But if it is the will of council to kind of take it that next step, I just, I asked council to not continue go down because it maybe require a fair amount of more research and development. And so I asked to sort of pause until I was able to come back to council. So don't need direction tonight, but just wanted to let you know where where we were at relative to that. Also, I darkened your email inboxes with a little synopsis of House Bill 2015, which again was that new sales and use tax for public safety. So I just wanted to make sure you had that information. And also for those who are on the MOU group with the Suquamish tribe, I did look in your inbox for a doodle poll. If you have not had a chance to fill that out, if you could, we're trying to identify a time that will work. Hopefully we'll have several options to share with the tribe so that we can actually move that forward. Also, on the table in front of you are a couple of handouts. One of those is specifically for the Leafline Trails Coalition. This is a network of trail communities basically supporting non-motorized infrastructure throughout the four county area that mirrors the Puget Sound Regional Council. And so it is an opportunity to be able to partner with that coalition, leverage all of that that connectivity and kind of muster to be continue to be able to to move our vision forward for non-motorized infrastructure. The the request that I wanted to to bring to council because this would be sort of one of those ongoing commitments is for the city of Pauls boat to to step up and become a member of the coalition, which has a dollar amount to that of $2,000.
I'm here seeing head nods, head nods.
Yep. Okay. I don't believe there are any. So what you see on one page is they had come up with a funding formula, which is basically kind of similar to, you know, assess valuation, population, et cetera. But what they are requesting or where we would fall out is in that $2,000 range.
This, this, this is
We would be the first.
This is money well spent. This is a real good
Support. I just, it looked like Farmington Faber might be already in this. Support. I, I would appreciate just
If they are, that's great.
I'd appreciate just a little bit more information. Is it so longstanding organization? Have we ever been members before? Any sort of additional background would be appreciated.
I don't think the city has been a member. I know that the coalition has had connections and collaborations with city staff as well as leadership in the past. I in a with a, an old hat, used to be on the the Leadership Council for the Leafline Coalition. And it's, it's basically, I can't say how long it's been in existence. It is falls under the umbrella of the Cascade Bicycle Club. They're sort of that fiduciary arm or umbrella. And so they have provided the staffing for that. But really, the request of the member jurisdictions throughout the four county area is to be able to help underwrite the cost of that staffing and support to be able to move the initiatives forward.
I've been on more than several conference calls with Leafline. It's a very reputable organization. It is all about walking public recreation and green spaces. Totally support this. It's a little amount of money for a huge bang for our buck. So I would, unless I'm hearing anything negative here, we can put a little summary agenda. You guys can do a little homework during next week. We'll bring it forward for council for approval.
Okay. Thank you. And the other handout that I had placed in front of you is just some of the language that I alluded to last week after the the derelict vessel conversation or tech, technical advisory group that we participated in. It's about the proposed kind of legislative change to address the definition of a derelict vessel. So I just wanted to provide that to you as well. And that is it for me. Yes, sir.
Um, it has obstructing a waterway. Would it be worth looking into or adding sea plane landing way to that as well?
But we can bring that forward back to the technical advisory group. This is obviously, we're in the interim before the next session. And so I'm sure they'd be refining the language. I'm more than happy to share that. And that was it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Heather, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, council members of the public. I want to just express also my gratitude for the work on the comprehensive plan. And thank you all for all of the support you gave staff along the way and appreciation. It was well heard and received. We were in a really unique position in that we were able to do the lion's share of all that work in-house. And it just speaks to the remarkable team that we have. And I'm just very grateful for, this was Carla's third comp plan, maybe not her last. And it was also Nicole's very first from soup to nuts. She accomplished that entire task. Every step of the way, she was engaged and involved. So again, thank you all for all your work on it. I'm very glad to be where we are tonight. I want to move on to what's happening on the ground right now before you all and just make sure everyone that's listening is informed. As I'm sure we've, I know we've received a lot of questions and comments about two properties in particular, and just wanted to clear the air for anyone that is listening and interested. The first of which is the Fourth Avenue project. We've spoken about this multiple times at council. There is an approved land use for 86 units. They're protecting the lion's share of the site is being protected with that development. It is a very stark contrast that people are observing, particularly the Viking Crest neighbors. But staff both on the field and in-house are working diligently to get out communication to interested parties and up to point, everything is is going as planned. And it does appear that the clearing work has completed. But I did want to just announce that that had been an approved site. There's information on our site about what those units are going to look and feel like.
Isn't it, aren't they maintaining 84% of the property?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
84% of the property is going to be untouched with tree retention. So they're only using 16%.
That's correct. It's a 13 acre site. So what what we're seeing is the most prominent acreage is right there along fourth and people don't see the the many acres that are being preserved along the hillside. And I stand corrected, 72 apartment total. Excuse me. And then the property on Jensen near the post office that the vegetation's been removed and is now being temporarily fenced. There is a land use approval for that project site, but the new property owner has indicated they do not plan to use that project approval. And it's the last property in Polesbo place. They plan to come to us later this summer to do a new pre-app with staff and then that will go through its own land use review and approval. And there will be notification of the public as that project moves through. But at this moment, they've only received permission to cut the vegetation and they've been start are installing signage. You may see some activity on that property, but council will be informed of it before others because the property owner has indicated that they are willing to expand a small portion of that property that's being used by the post office for parking to make available for downtown employee parking. But that will involve a council action and that will happen hopefully the second meeting in July is where we're aiming. And lastly, about parking, I do want to share my appreciation for those that came and spoke about enforcement in particular, and just any of their concerns about parking. We always appreciate hearing where people are at in the community. Our last meeting council did give staff the the green light to move forward with third-party enforcement. I want to share that we have narrowed down to our top candidate. We are doing some background research on them. And we are also planning to come into council at our second meeting in July, if all goes well with a contract for you all to move forward with approving along with a budget amendment for enforcement for third-party services that reflects the wills of council. As we're marching towards with the anticipated hope of launching enforcement in August, we will be working to improve our signage as Josh and I indicated when we last came to you all in May to discuss this matter. And so we will be looking at potentially installing signage that reflect the hours that we will be enforcing. And we're looking at hours that will be synonymous with what our paid parking may be. So we will be working towards that. And we may, we will also be bringing forth a budget amendment to you all in July to reflect that. So in total, in our second meeting in July, if all goes as planned, we will be bringing forth the parking agreements that we've been working on. We are making some improved movement with Bank of America. I did let you all know that they had showed interest, but there's they've moving up further along to the green light. They've passed yellow. It looks like they're more in the green realm right now. So we have a total of four different parking proposals. We hope to be able to bring to you all in a similar timeframe in July. Any questions?
Questions for Heather. Go ahead.
Heather, I know when the the property next to the post office, the previous owners, one of the things they were offering was the, I think what they called approved plans for what was a mixed-use development by the previous owners. Do we have any indication at this point whether the new owners plan to use that same design or they'll be coming forward with a different design? Do you have a sense of that at this point?
They have indicated they'll be coming forward with a different design. It does appear that there will be some similarities though on what was approved in terms of unit types.
Go ahead.
And you said you'd be bringing the proposed increase on parking fines at the same time?
We, those are being reviewed by our legal team right now. So there's a possibility, depends on how quickly they get through legal review.
Okay. And is that one of the times where if we update the ordinance, there's a lag in implementation or is that immediate? I know we talked about subordinates. There's a lag time.
So the ordinance for the fees, could there be a lag time between the time we actually start enforcement and we've increased the fees? Is that
No, like legally, some of our, we vote yes, but then there's, there's a lag before we're allowed to like the fireworks. So there's, there's a year change, but this is not one of those.
I will ask Regan to respond to that. Okay. It doesn't follow fireworks year long processed for adoption. It's going to be five days after publication. So whatever time we we designate.
Okay. So when we institute the contract, potentially it could be with the new fines.
So the contract is separate from the fines. But when we start enforcement, the fines should hopefully be traveling right along with it and we could make that distinction.
That's what I was hoping.
That's what we're aiming for as well. If all timing works out, yes.
Any, any other questions for Heather? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Welcome back. Good evening, Council. I'm applying for a couple of grants and I wanted to make sure it doesn't meet with any objections from council. As I'm enjoying this writing experience. First grant is for the one tenth of 1% mental health chemical dependency tax fund applying again this year to see if they might be willing to support the Recovery Resource Center and Cafe. I'm actually feeling a little more optimistic about our chances this year. Thanks to City Administrator Gelder, there was a field trip by several members of the committee as well as staff that works with that committee. I think now that they understand the model and they have a personal familiarity with what we're doing, we're in a better position to get funding from the county this year. Second grant I'm applying for was something that Heather mentioned during her presentations about the Model ADU project last session or last council meeting. As Heather mentioned, there's an opportunity to apply for county housing funds to defray some of the costs for a model two-bedroom ADU. So I'd like to apply for city, I'm sorry, for County SEA Community Investment and Affordable Housing Funds from the county to defray the cost of a two-bedroom ADU. It would have a couple of benefits for the residents of Polesbo. One, we'd be able to provide some very affordable housing for a family or an individual making 60% or below of our area median income. So that particular family or individual would benefit. But I think more importantly, doing the model project and having something for the public can see might stimulate somebody building an ADU privately in their own backyard or a church building an ADU or a company building an ADU. And really taking this responsibility for affordable housing and helping to spread it a little bit more broadly amongst our residents. So I'd like to write this grant to to create a model ADU that folks can see and be inspired by and house an individual or a family. But there's a couple of unknowns that I want to run by you. The first unknown is that we've talked about doing this on city property, which would promote permanent affordability, but we don't have a site yet. That's something that I'll be working on with the city administrator and the mayor. We do not have a site chosen, but we would like to build it on city property. The second unknown is what the city match might be. The limit to the application is $250,000 for that two-bedroom ADU. According to just very preliminary conversations we've had, it will cost more. So if we get that grant, I'll be coming back to council to see what your appetite is and using affordable housing tax dollars to make up the additional cost after that $250,000 grant to build one of these model ADUs. So again, because of these unknowns, I wanted to come before council in my public comment tonight and just see if you'd like me to keep moving forward with these applications or if you have any reservations.
Want to know more?
I'd like to know more before, seems like you're on something that I think we explore all of our options, see which ones make sense.
So just for clarification, the the application, it's will be due in early July, council member? Do you want me to come to you to discuss the application in a workshop before I submit? Or we just don't accept it unless we have a council conversation?
I guess, and I would defer to the mayor and to Rob from the standpoint of a completed application, but it would seem to be that a site location with a estimated cost would be part of the application. I'm just going through my mind. Unless you're just asking for, you know, funding to explore for sites or do, do an SDAP of some sort. funding to explore for sites or do an SDAP of some sort.
My intent was to keep the location open, but say it would be cited on city property. But you're right, having a cost estimate will be necessary before this application is submitted.
We're gonna, we're gonna need to have the cost application, cost estimates for these ADUs anyway, because we're gonna have people coming in asking about them. And so this might be a good exercise for no reason to get it costed out.
I agree, I just, the timing seems to be, you know, what's the cost of construction? What's the site development cost? What's the hookup cost? What's the project? You know, can scramble to put that together. I just was like, if we don't have that today and it's due in three weeks.
Do you think we can get a rough estimate cost in a week?
I can say that the Builders Association is working on it and they're diligently working on it. So anticipation is we would have had it two weeks ago, so I'm very hopeful it'll come soon.
You know, and if we, if we, if they can, and that really gets into our prevailing wage and a whole bunch of other stuff, but new constructions coming in at three forty to three fifty a square foot, all in. If we can deliver it three fifty or four hundred a square foot, because these things are a little bit smaller, you don't get the economies of scale and they, you know, but it's all in. Got to get civil piece, all that other stuff. It's just teasing it out so that we don't, we get in there and we get a grant that makes sense. We don't get in there and get surprised and go, oh, gosh, there's another five-hundred-thousand dollars in site costs. I just, sorry, belaboring, but it's hard for some of, in council comments like this to go green light on it, other than encourage you to go forward, at least from where I sit.
Let's, I think it's a worthwhile project for us to proceed forward. So why don't we do this? We'll do a little more homework over the next couple of weeks. Why don't we get ahold of somebody like BJC and have them help price it out, see what they do? And I mean, they kind of owe us, they're doing the Nordic cottages. Maybe they can do some cost estimate takeoff on it and then we go from there.
Mayor, I believe we'll have an answer by the next council meeting on July 2nd. I might bring this back to workshop with a more accurate cost consideration. And then I still have a couple of weeks to submit the grant, so let's bring this back to workshop.
Good, all right.
Any objections on the other grant application for the staffing at the Recovery Center and Cafe?
No, I think that sounds good. I just, you started to say it, but then stopped. If we get the grant, we don't have to accept it though, right? So, yeah, so in the end, I would say pursuing the grant is by no means a guarantee. So I would lean towards we pursue it and see if we're even going to get it. Because even if it ends up being something we decide we don't want to do, we always deny the grant.
Mr. McVeigh, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Kim, I just want to ask, I know that we had some conversations about whether council should submit a letter to the county supporting related affordable and its efforts to obtain some funds to renovate the Hostmark apartment complex. Are these, the one affordable housing grant we talked about, you're talking about applying for, would we be competing with related affordables requests or are we talking about separate accounts?
We would be competing. These CIA funds have far less restrictions than the home CDBG funds that are given out as part of the same process. After an internal discussion with staff, we decided that the obligations through home and CDBG are just too high for this ADU, so we opted against applying for those funds. So yes, council member, we would be applying for the same pot of funds.
And basically, how they use one application, but take all of the related pools of funds? And then as they go through the deliberative process and they're making awards, then they will allocate funding from the various funding sources, whether it's CIA, CDBG or home, that makes the most sense for those projects. So we, yes, we would potentially be competing, but it could be funded out of two different pots of money.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to raise the issue, seemed appropriate. So I guess I will trust staff to determine whether, you know, we're, we have a conflict. Okay. So appreciate that. And then I would just, I know we're going to talk about it later tonight, the change in format of having this section up at the dais, so we're not all doing the swivel head thing with staff. And I wholly support that idea because this is getting a little out of hand. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Pam. Yes, regarding the CIA, CIA grant, is it? So if the grant was given and accepted, do you know at the front what the timeline would be that, okay, now you need to get it done? Well, yes, is that?
There's an expectation that there is something moving forward within the year of that award happening. But as we learned with Nordic cottages, we receive, I'm sorry, no, I'm conflating things. Something needs to be started within the year, or at least some plan needs to be in place to get the project moving. But I have seen projects funded by these dollars that take more than one year to build. So there's an expectation within a year, but I know there's some flexibility there.
All right, so we got a game, Pam, for Kim. Okay, good. Jeff, how about you?
I was going to say my updates are short, but then I had all this time to think about more things. I just want to say thank you to the team and thank you to Deb and thank you to Councilmember McVeigh while I was gone for doing the interviews for LTAC. I also want to give a shout out to Public Works. If you've been noticing, we have new park entrance signs in many of our parks and they are looking sharp. And Josh Jones and Public Works team are doing a phenomenal job. They look great. I also had the pleasure of visiting Parko Philosophico, Parko Philosophico in, while I was traveling, which is a philosophy park. And it reminded me of our partnership with Kitsap Regional Libraries when we do our poetry walks. And in this park, what they did is they had different philosophy that is for realist, philosophy for idealist. And you would walk along and they had the actual art and the philosophies based on the paths. Every path you took had a different life philosophy with the philosophers. So Pam, I might be following up with our team once we have some capacity this fall on that idea. On a really great note, we did receive, I did receive notification from the Soquamish Foundation that we received the Title X Grant, two thousand dollars to put towards the skate park renovation at Rob Park. So that's the, you're seeing the above-ground one, so that project is moving forward quite nicely. And then you will have a pleasant surprise a little later in June, we'll have a, sorry, a little later in July. We had a phenomenal turnout for our Senior Health and Fitness Day, the National Senior Health and Fitness Day. You'll hear a little bit about that, how great our partnerships are with the community, what we're doing with events, and also some really great news on facility updates for our senior programs. I think that wasn't that long.
Thank you, Jeff. That sounds great. Kim?
Sorry, usually I have nothing, but tonight, I just want to, you received an email and invitation from our state auditor for the entrance conference. I've had responses from Councilmember McVeigh and Councilmember Newell who will be attending. And so I will forward that team's meeting. If anybody else would like to attend, let us know, because we do have to notice for quorum if we have more than three. I know several are traveling for the AWC conference, so we will fill you in on anything exciting that comes about. They will be announcing what our accountability section of the audit will be. And then also, coming up in August, AWC, Association of Washington Cities, puts on a very informative budget training. It is in Wenatchee. They do have some scholarships available. Usually, a lot of times we aren't eligible for those because we're a little larger in their capacity. But it is an excellent training and puts it down to a very beginning level. And they also have some sections that can go to the more advanced. And they gear it many times towards the electives or department heads working through the process. So I will forward you that email if anybody's interested. The early registration deadline is July 7th to receive that cut rate. So you might want to make note of that if you're interested.
Yeah, I went to that last year and it was very, very good. Deb loved it because at the end of each day, I sent her an email of questions that I compiled from each of the sessions I was in. But yeah, it's like AWC with topics and you can pick and choose. But yeah, it's all budget, all day for two straight days. Just know it was like a hundred and five the whole time I was there, so.
Thank you, Deb. Anyone else? All right, so we're going to go on to questions and concerns of the council. Questions, go ahead, Mr. Strong.
Last week, Councilman Eckert and I raised the question using the Highway 305 template, the working group mayor, to get rolling, looking at the feasibility of forming a 307, Highway 307 working group. In the banter back and forth, we talked about obviously leading through our North Kitsap County Commissioner and not presuming, because there's the question of who should participate. And unlike the original 305, this doesn't come with any funding. There's no Connect Washington. But the need is there and the desire is there. And I'm wondering what your city administrators' thoughts might be in that regard.
Any thoughts?
I, you know, I think that it would be just a great opportunity. We could probably initially just formulate outreach to sort of our brainstormed partners in that conversation, get a test of the waters to see who has the appetite and/or the bandwidth. As we all know, everyone's probably pulled in umpteen different directions and they may or may not nibble, but probably in the key partner in all of that would be WashDOT. So understanding sort of their ability to actively participate in those conversations will make or break our ability to be successful in doing that and finding a path forward. So I can probably start off with just making an outreach to WashDOT, to the Olympic region and see if they have the ability. They're very familiar with our working groups. They, over the years, have held them up as a model to other communities as a way to collaboratively address some of the transportation issues. But even they have limitations in terms of what they can do. So I'll start there and then I can bring that back to council when I hear it from them.
All right, any other questions and concerns? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to legislative recap and future priorities, and this is Brian.
No, that's last week's.
Oh, I got the wrong agenda? Thanks. Okay, it's, I was going to say, I don't see him around here. Okay, I wasn't here last week, so I was like, okay. HUDPA and Polesbo's connection with expectation and discussion. This is Deb and Rob.
And HUDPA stands for Historic Downtown Polesbo Association for the record.
And so I'm actually going to let Debbie off the hook. She was kind enough to actually submit the grandicus, to hold the agenda item. But your team got together several weeks ago, no, actually it was Monday of this week, I believe, following the conversation that we had last week at council. And so just wanted to have a bit of a PowerPoint, I think you have it. But the idea really was to kind of, not all council members have necessarily have the same level of history. So I won't go through the entirety of the PowerPoint, but do know that there are some slides in the back of it that will actually have a little bit more of the historical information. Try to pare it down to some of the, kind of the pertinent or germane information and then posing some questions really to help kind of shape this conversation. And I will share it, so. And if there's always a delay, there we go. Okay, at least, you know, you know it's working when it happens, it transforms in front of you. Just wanted to take this opportunity, we actually updated some of the photos on here because per the conversation last week, we were trying to suss out what were those things that we really had those touchpoints? Holiday lights were part of it. And then for folks that may not be too familiar with the boundaries of the HDPA when it was created, we had an old kind of black and white map, but Tiffany, who helped a lot with the comp land, she came to the rescue again and actually helped us create this, this map, which just really indicates it took the streets out of it, but focused really on the parcels to demonstrate the geography for those businesses that are included in the Historic Downtown Polesbo Association. Also known as BIA. So that's the Business Improvement Area, which is basically that RCW that enables, enabled the city back in nineteen eighty-eight to create this entity, this vehicle by which to assess local business owners to be actually be able to do improvements downtown. And so what does this mean? I don't need to read all of this for you, but it is that in this partnership, the city takes on the lion's share of all of the collection, the reporting and the, ultimately, because it is, it falls under the city, it is a quote-unquote a city activity that has been delegated to the HDPA to basically execute it. But we are still on the hook to make sure that the books are good, the numbers are good, and we're subject to the state auditor at any given year. This gives you a little bit more about the RCW in terms of the formation. Some of the services, or I should say some, I was almost debated splitting this onto two slides because the font gets a little small when you look at all the different touchpoints that our finance department has. But that is from managing all the cash, doing the billing, trying to work with business owners to become current, because not everyone is. And all of those different touchpoints that we have. And then often also from the public works standpoint, here's just another list of that in terms of, these are the very visual, visible ones, right? You don't necessarily see what happens in finance, but when it comes to flower baskets, Christmas lights, storage of supplies and materials, bench maintenance, et cetera, that is, really falls under the public works umbrella. One thing I do want to call out is in terms of this partnership and that investment that HDPA has made in specifically the watering, we were able to pull from the last few years the dollar amount that was contributed by HDPA for that. So in twenty-one, you know, it's kind of in that same ballpark, so between twelve and a half thousand to, you know, thirteen and a half, somewhere in that ballpark overall. And of course, our estimates for this year are just over thirty thousand for that work. So whereas we had in twenty-twenty-one, council had made the decision to support it with a contribution of six thousand. That was changed in twenty-twenty-one, so kind of what's on the books and what we're doing is there's a little bit of a mismatch there. And this are the sort of the financial records of the HDPA that kind of shows you the revenues that have come out, expenditures and fund balance. So as of the end of twenty-twenty-four, and Deb helped me make sure I'm reading this correctly, is that fund balance for the HDPA was just over eighty-five thousand. So, okay, thank you. And so we're thinking that, you know, in terms of the, let me, let me start off by saying, you know, I think everybody has the same vision in mind. It's really about the downtown core and how that truly is the iconic draw to, in many ways, to the city of Polesbo. And this partnership is how we really kind of make it and maintain that attractiveness that brings people here. So as we were talking internally, it's really about the question that we thought would be helpful for council to grapple with is what's that level of service that you would like to see in the downtown core as this attraction, the beautification of the downtown area? The holiday lights, the baskets, planters, hovenby? You know, what is that? Because that's really the starting point. And then figuring out how to do it, because one of the questions we have is that it's really can be difficult when you have a volunteer organization that are made up of business owners whose primary business is their business and they're volunteering. And with all good volunteer organizations, you have a high level of churn. And then you start all over again with a certain amount of education about what's the organization? What do we do? How do we do it? So being able to not only identify the sort of that level of service we want to provide, but how to ensure the best continuity we can for delivering on that? And then really kind of figuring out on an annual basis, what, how do we program that? Where's that split at any given, given time? So that's some of the questions and then That's some of the questions and then some uh if you want to stop there and discuss, otherwise they have some.
I think we should stop there.
Okay.
And discuss this. Okay, so I mean. What do you want to see in the downtown? I mean, I frankly love our downtown. I love the flower baskets. I love the Christmas lights. I love the banners. Um I think that um all of that stuff is is really necessary. For the the basic character of the downtown. Um when the flower baskets get ginormous and they're almost down to the street, it's absolutely beautiful. And you know, when Haven Bay is cleaned up and it needs to be cleaned up, it's absolutely wonderful place for people to sit. And um you know, th- that is our brand. Okay, you know, our brand isn't Noel Road where I live. Our brand isn't Vineland Point. Our brand isn't isn't Viking Avenue. Our brand is right down there. And I think we would be negligent if we didn't support. Maintaining that brand, maintaining that image. So. I the question we really, I think, should be asking is who's going to pay for it? Okay, I mean, that's my two cents as a citizen and the mayor. That's my two cents. Mr. Stern, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think there's any question. By this council, a past council or future council, our commitment to the downtown. It is the postcard face of the town. Um and so that commitment remains unwavering. Uh. I know that in the next four years, Mayor, hopefully sooner rather than later, we're going to undertake a major renovation. Of that front street and the relationship to the surrounding streets, and that'll be huge for everybody and involve. If we can budget for it outside the enterprises, quite a bit of amenity and redesign as well. So when we talk about, so I don't think there's any question about the commitment. My my question is level of service. Uh and I'm going to say this lovingly. I was part of that nineteen eighty eight cohort. Of original business owners who agreed to be assessed and paid into that the entire time I was in the downtown. Um I think if we're looking at increasing our level of service commensurately and appropriately. Historic Downtown Paul's Bo Association should look at their level of service as represented by the membership assessment. Uh to my knowledge, it's not increased since nineteen eighty eight, but costs have. And so I won't belabor what's an obvious point. And I say it lovingly because I was a a member of the original group that agreed to be assessed.
But isn't that that change of assessment? That is a vote of, that's a change of ordinance of of our ordinance. That's us. Well, excuse me. Sorry, guys. It's you guys, okay? Not me. It's you guys. You guys can change. That ordinance and change those dollar amounts uh in order to make it. Lord, just at least keep up with inflation. So Rick and then Brit.
Um yeah, and we had talked about tonight, talk more short term, do something later. We said like a retreat to talk long term. Um so something I'll float as a blur between the two, like level of service. Like like Rob said, we're relying on people to do this as a part time right now. Um. So I would be interested in looking into, I brought up the card, one of the things about a creative district is you have to have an administrator. It could be worth looking into a part time position that is essentially the the downtown. Person. So they they help administer the H D P A, they administer the creative district. They're just sort of the person that does all this, and it could be something that L TAC funds could pay for. It could be something they do is go to. So just so that could be something that we look at as a future, but um short term. I think that that the numbers show something where when when there was a readily available contractor to handle like the watering of the flowers. There was a certain cost. As we've been trying to deal with this as a more emergent situation, the costs have skyrocketed. I don't have a problem supporting it. What I think though is what we should probably look at is. Accept the undertaking that we're going to continue to do it and then try to find a much more affordable way to do it going forward. Um if Public Works is going to do it, find the best way for Public Works to do it. If it means, you know. Getting some of the equipment that the specialist had, so it's cheaper and not as labor intensive or whatever whatever Mike would say is the best way to do it. So it's not. Three times the cost that it did when we contracted it out.
You have a public, you have a union labor force. Okay.
Yeah.
Rick, go ahead.
Um while my comment was pertaining to the the last thing about dues, um. Feel like my very specific question or comment to Deb has slipped away, but it'll come back. Um but I appreciate what you just said, Rick. That's essentially where I'm at with that. Um. Because there just aren't contractors willing to do this work. And I am not going to speak for Mike, but I think you have most of the equipment already that's necessary. It's mostly a a a labor. Yeah.
Yeah, it's the labor cost and it's a unionized labor force, so it's expensive. So Gary, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. So um just to clarify, uh Mayor, what you said, um. The only thing preventing uh an increase in the H D P A dues. That have an increase since nineteen eighty eight is council taking some action?
Yeah, it's an ordinance structure. Wow.
I I was under the impression that the members of H D P A had to approve it. We we can.
Sure about that. Denver?
Can we invite Dan? Can we invite Denver up here to chalk for a minute, Rob? Would that be appropriate?
We can, but uh we also have a historian.
Yeah.
As well.
Okay, all right. Well, I know I know people were looking into why the dues haven't increased since nineteen eighty eight and what's required to do that. If someone could educate us about that.
I'm trying to I'm trying to elaborate on the point, Gary. And part of it is that there's a process of auditing. What is already, how dues are assessed. They're assessed, but there's only. Three different ways you can assess dues, and I'm not going to go into all of that. But what I think was found back in nineteen eighty eight, and I think it. Roughly is is still true today is that the most equitable way to assess dues seems like it's based on square footage. However, um. It's it's maybe not totally accurate. Like, we know that there are businesses that are paying more than they should be paying and maybe paying less than they should be paying. Based on square footage. So what is the process of auditing to make sure that the square footage is what it says it is?
Why don't we turn this over to Deb? Deb, do you have anything to add to this?
There are, um as Councilmember um Lydell said, is is there's three different ways you can assess dues and it's square foot. Number of employees are based on gross earnings. And the dues have been set up, um so the square foot is based also um on the retail. Front or whether it's a service industry, because the service industry has um has a different maximum. The rates have been set with the maximum, which those have not been updated. And so it could be as simple as raising the maximum ways to increase the dues is there's a couple of different things. The membership can petition and come and I know Denver has been looking into it too. So they can petition and come forward and ask for those. Those and if they don't want to do that, council does have the ability to do this through an ordinance. You have to go through a public hearing process. And you have to have a certain number and days of notification. And and if we went that way, I definitely would want to follow for their city attorney to make sure we're following. The process. Um because e- even in the council setting these dues, the membership does have the ability to come and um. Address, address that increase as well.
I think it's a public hearing. Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I had a question about some of that, Deb, um why the retail and service was a separate rate? Do you know what the thinking was behind that originally?
Um I I'm I can guess and go back. I believe probably because the retailers. Were benefiting more by the beautification and it brought and it drove the, you know, the customers in because the intent is to develop the historic downtown. And to provide services and bring in the outside population where most services, um I'm thinking when you're going to utilize that service. You're probably not thinking, oh, these baskets are beautiful. I'm going to go set up a bank account, you know, just for instance. But it was whereas, oh, these baskets are beautiful. I'd love to go in and have a a meal there or something. So that would be my guess. But yes, and so the dues haven't increased and and we have, um we do have a system where we're trying to. Get correct on the membership, but they definitely have two different structures and two different maxims as well.
And well, and the other thing that is bothering me is that is that the nonprofits, the residuals. Um don't pay. And we have all of these businesses, I mean, all of these apartments going in. You know, and they're using the downtown and they're not paying a dime. We have some very large profits, i.e. the city of Paul's Bow. That doesn't pay a dime. We're in the downtown and we use the downtown. Neither does Martha and Mary. Neither does the sons of Norway. So I I mean, I think that I think that we need to take a real close look at the structures. I mean, wonder if we left all the retailers exactly the same due structures and we just had the nonprofits and the residential start to pay. I mean, that would be a pretty large increase and and a downtown merchants aren't touched. So you're first and then you. Oh, go ahead, Greg.
I I just wanted to clarify, um the apartments, the whole complex has a business license, and so they pay for the entire. Um facility, but again, they're based on a service, so it is capped out. The way that we generate a billable customer is by them generating a business license. So we couldn't, we couldn't have residents generate business licenses. So a res- it so when we, when it, what's what initiates the dues and then becoming a member is when they apply for a business. License in the location of the downtown. So the apartment complex is a business and they have a business license. But each one of the residents do not have a business license. And so and it and there's also, when you start getting to residents, there's a little, you can do this. Um again, I'd reach out to the attorney, but there are some limitations because the the parking is, the parking improvements are related more to the residents. And so. We can tie that together, but but the the difference is is the residents, but definitely the apartment complexes in the building, they are paying the amount. For their facility, but they do cap out at the service levels.
Okay, so they're capped out even though they're.
Rob.
Correct.
Go to the slide that shows the dues.
Yeah, I was gonna say, could we, could we just get some context for what the capping outnumber is? Because it's sort of laughably low.
Keep going. Oops, that one.
Okay, what do we got here?
So something like the Sophie would be the eighteen hundred per year because it's a assessed non-retail business.
Correct.
And it's.
It's insane.
It's ten thousand square feet.
Yeah, yep.
So that would be eighteen hundred a year.
Mm hmm. And can I?
Doing your math. Yeah, okay.
I just want to put something on the record. Um on behalf of the board of the H D P A, the the board of the H D P A supports. A change in dues. So I just want to make that clear.
It's Rick's turn. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. And this this is what I was asking about because it just didn't quite make sense to me. And so I I would absolutely be behind. Support looking at this because I think we all recognize that. Front Street in nineteen eighty eight and Front Street in twenty twenty five are not the same. Um and so the idea behind this may have made sense then, but I'm not sure it makes sense now. And. You know, we definitely, we encourage a certain type of business in Front Street. We want tourists and foot traffic and all that. I'm not sure that this necessarily meets what we're trying Front Street to be. And so I think that this makes sense to look at. And maybe this is not the way to do it anymore, and we come up with a new way to do it. So it may lead to increases, it may not, it just may need to a restructuring, but I I'm just not sure this this is the right. Math anymore.
I think that we need to re- look at this, and I think that we need to look at it uh and make sure that. Um you know, our existing businesses that have been paying faithfully along aren't. We need to capture those that aren't paying, i.e. the city of Paul's Bow. Okay, we're not paying, and that's not right. Go ahead.
Um I was forgot distracted. Um. Beyond but the vitality that downtown brings to the city and these other immeasurables. Um I assume a significant portion of our sales revenue come from downtown.
Not really.
Not really.
Like number five.
Oh, Walmart.
About, they're about thirteen percent of our total sales tax revenue.
But probably a smaller percentage than that, I hope, of square footage of the town. But um the point being that, yeah, it makes sense that we that we as a city kick in as well and as uh in conjunction with increasing dues would be a good, a good lockstep.
I would say though, I mean, the city is kicking in, right? The while it may not be paying H D P A dues through this structure. The council has made commitments for a number of years to subsidize this work. Bearing levels, it changes every year, but there is a commitment to doing that.
There's also a slide in here somewhere where you talked about the service that Deb's department provides. And what it, what's being charged versus what's actually being paid, and it's not. Right, Deb? It's something like, I think, six thousand, but actual costs are much higher.
Correct. Several years we evaluated, um just did a rough cost of the cost of the hours that the finance department put in. Um it is written in the agreement between the city and the Historic Downtown Association that we will be fully billing them. But the council has made the decision to charge them a three thousand dollars a year. Um recovery fee or indirect fee that comes back to them. So yes, so the city very much is subsidizing. And that includes not only the finance department work, but the public works as well.
Mayor.
Okay, I think it was, I think you're next and then Gary.
Just the um the cit- the city hall is in the map.
Yeah.
So maybe, you know, they're considered a member when when those are reassessed.
Okay.
Yeah, I I don't want to get bogged down in the city's contribution. We we do contribute a lot. I'm willing to look at that. Um Mayor, I I think it would be a huge mistake while we're doing this not to take a look at increasing the assessment of dues for. Businesses uh and relying just on increases from nonprofits in the city. I I think we, it needs to be holistic. Um so I'm looking at the three questions that we're supposed to be discussing here. Um I I think we all agree it should be a high level of service. Should this level of service continue to be an expectation of a volunteer organization? Like H D P A, I would say no. Uh and the third question, should level of service be programmed into city public works workload? Each year with budget appro- appropriation to make it happen, along with an annual offset from H D P A dues. I would say a round resounding yes to that.
What think the rest of you? Those are the three questions. Yes, okay, Rick?
Um yeah, I agree with all of Gary's answers. Um and I just had one other question for Deb. There was something in there about that. Responsibilities and um basically delinquency, bad grit, debt, collection agencies. Is that something you're having to do now? Like, is that a cost that we need to look at?
Um you usually the collection agency will keep a fee that would pay them back. Um the finance department absorbs that work, and so we didn't not collect that. I will say is um what's difficult with collections, that is. Other than revoking their business license and shutting them down, there is really not a um an enforcement tool that the city can utilize. So we do send them to collection, but many times these are businesses that are struggling in their partnerships, and the reason they are partnerships is so they don't. Have to. So sometimes they're deemed uncollectible. Um several years ago, we had a few businesses that were um that weren't, and we still have a couple that. That um are not paying dues. And so we tried to go be proactive, but there's limitations on what we can do.
Okay, so I same answers. I still agree. I just, when we look at the fee structure, we probably do, we want to make sure that we don't. Inadvertently create a situation where we're hurting our businesses rather than helping the overall picture. Um similar to what the conversation about the D N O tax.
Okay, so Pam and then Brett.
Uh I I did what Gary said in reference to the questions. They, um one thing I do um wanted to ask is. I'm surprised that Mike or Diane are not falling out of their chair regarding the third bullet point. So I'm assuming that you are, you know, on board with. The workload and the seasonal impacts in reference to that. Um because that that's a concern because we do want to support, you know, how how our community looks. The core of the downtown, uh the seasonal aspects regarding the lights going up, the flower baskets. I'm sorry, go ahead and chime in there.
I have some insight and I I really want them to speak for themselves, but I do think that. Feel like there could be a benefit of laying this out in a more official capacity to where you know what to expect. You guys are so. Capable, like that's the problem is that. Fire start and emergencies erupt and I'm just like, Mike, I'm so sorry. Because they solve problems all the time, but this wouldn't be so difficult if it was just a part of the plan. Like routinely, I hope, I hope. You have a mic. You need to get a mic, Mike.
I actually had a little bit of a conversation uh with Victor today about this and kind of our feelings on it and. And both of us say, as long as we. Have the funding to do it, as long as we have the manpower, Alex, you know, manpower allocations to do it. It it all comes down to a priority on 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 what city council wants. We're happy to do it and program it into our workload. We know what it is and we can schedule this time, this day we're doing it, this day we're taking lights down. This day we're doing this, this day we're doing this.
What, and the, one of the other reasons that I think this would be hugely beneficial is that it, it wouldn't be so dependent on who happens to sit in the position, the board position that I currently sit in, right? It's similar in nature, I guess, that maybe not as important, but similar in nature to why this council decided we wanted a city administrator. We wanted the continuity of some professional management. And I'm not saying that Public Works is gonna be making all the decisions creatively. But if they kind of know what is on the annual docket for these things, it helps to provide that continuity so that if I'm not the person sitting in this, in this board position, that things don't just completely fall apart, because that worries me. I mean, prior to myself sitting here, there was one year where there was a different individual. And, but prior to that, I think it was a decade at least of the same really hardworking volunteer. Like, and she just knew her stuff, you know, um, and did an amazing job. But, you know, I, I don't know that I'm gonna do it forever, you know? It's not, it's kind of an unrealistic expectation.
No, I was just gonna say, when it's not factored into the workload uh or the program for a given year, then what it does is it continually competes with the work that is programmed, that is scheduled, that our public works team is trying to accomplish. And, and many times, the same limited season we have, that's good weather, to get a whole bunch of other stuff done. Um, and so I guess, here's some potential next steps or considerations. I just, we brainstormed them, so take them for what they're worth. I, I guess, if I were to summarize it into an ask, if there was direction from council to sort of move forward and sort of take the lead in sort of this, the beautification activities, to not necessarily prescribe how it's done, to leave that to staff to figure out how best to do it. Whether it's internally through uh existing resources, whether it's through um casual labor, whether it's through being able to maybe do a multi-year contract with someone to actually do some of these components. Let us sort of take that back and figure out how to make it happen.
I, I think that's probably a really good solution. What do you think, Council?
I, I support that. And I, I mean, in my mind, our downtown core of the Swalkables is an urban park. And it's part of what we should be taking care of is a community, is part of our urban park. And that's how I view it, especially as we invest in upgrades and stuff. It's part of, to your point, Mayor, it's part of who we are.
It's part, it's our brand, it's who we are. Um, Mr. McVeigh?
Um, I, I think the other benefit here of, if the, our city employees are more involved, it seems to me that um the H D P A organization could then uh focus even further on, on marketing uh in bringing people to the community. And they don't have to split their time quite so much in, in terms of what, what they're all doing. And I think that would be a benefit to the city.
Yeah, I mean, there are other creative ideas that we have. The H D P A also, you know, puts on some of the events. I mean, it's pretty limited, but there's ideas for building on, you know, the beautification efforts that attract people, you know, in a more cohesive way at holiday time. And, and, you know, so there's ideas. But with, with it being such a struggle to just accomplish kind of the basics, it doesn't, it doesn't always leave.
I think, I, I agree. I think one of the thing, though, I think we do need to raise the dues, okay? We need.
I don't think anyone's arguing on that.
Yeah.
We're just trying to figure out how to do it. We do, we've been given different information for years, so.
We can do is bring back a couple of different scenarios and say, if we did this, it, this is the revenue stream. If we did this, this would be the revenue stream and kind of, you know, beat those numbers up a little bit. Does that, does that still sound okay to you, Rob? Okay.
Yeah, we, I'm just gonna put a, we need to involve the H D P A board in that because they are gonna have to help us sell us, sell this to membership.
Oh, yeah, I mean, this is, this has been the major concern all along is, um, we have to, we, the H D P A has proved to its membership that, that it, it's beneficial, because, you know, currently, at the rates they're paying now, which some of them straight up refuse to pay, or they grumble. Um, and now we're talking about increasing it. So they need to know why. And we've been working for the last year or two uh trying to instill better trust and improve communication and get more engagement. And there has been some improvement. It's, it's slow work, though, and people are very busy running their businesses, so it's.
Good, Rick.
Uh, yeah, I saw, one of your things was, is a business improvement area the right tool versus a main sheet program? Not now, but when you come back, I, I don't know what the difference between that is. So I'm, don't know everybody else. If you could make that part of, explain sort of what our options are. And again, pros and cons, kind of like the due structure. If we do this, what's the difference? We do this, um, because like Ed said, we're, we're gonna be tearing the whole thing up anyway physically. If it's time to tear up the structure in this sense at the same time, and then we get into the conversation about the creative district and we essentially redo the whole Front Street at once from every aspect. Let's, let's discuss that. So, you know, in all the different angles.
Okay. May I ask a question just for clarification? For my colleagues, on question number two that was posed, should this level of service continue to be an expectation of a volunteer organization like H D P A? Most of you seem to answer no. I guess I'm, I'm, I just wanna suss out some clarification. Are, is that your way of saying we think the city should join in more capacity? Or what else does that mean to you?
My mind, what that means is it's a recognition that when things don't get done, we're in it anyway. I mean, whether we want to or not, we're married to this organization and we're married to our downtown. And when a spouse can't do something, the other spouse does, okay? That's what this is. And um, at least in my opinion, I mean, this is what's happened. That's why Mike's watering all the flowers. I mean, okay, um, we're taking down the Christmas lights. Okay?
Yeah.
We're taking down.
Yeah.
Yeah, truly, like, help us anymore. Um, we're talking about what we're gonna do with Havin Bay, you know, the, the, it's a mess, and so we're gonna have to get that cleaned up. So, I mean, it, it's part of, it is our responsibility as city government. I mean, we want our downtown vibrant, alive, clean, like, you know, a really amazing place to come to. And if the, for whatever reason, Hudpa can't do it, somebody's gotta do it.
Right.
Yeah, Britt, I, I, I think I would help, I would answer your question by saying, I think we need to prioritize the most important activities uh and professionalize them. And then there could be some less important priorities that there could still, you know, would welcome volunteers. But if the volunteers don't come through, it's not gonna sort of be as noticeable as if we don't water the plants or.
Cuz it's really, uh, it's really hard to be like the only volunteers out, you know, my husband and I out, you know, when the city's helping take down Christmas lights and it, yeah, volunteers are.
Do it every year, you know?
No, uh, Councilman McVeigh hit exactly what I was gonna ask. We'd like to have a priority. What, what actual workload do you guys want as a priority? What is the public works will do? Public works would be nice if you could, you know, or this, this or that. So just, just so we have a good workload, so I can make a workload measures plan, how much manpower is gonna be, this, that, the other thing, so.
Or it could be where we program, here, this is the level of service. It's baskets, it's, 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 you know, those five things. We program it, we figure out what the budget is to make that happen. And then we partner in many ways with H D P A to, to offset those costs. So the, that role would be more about a contribution to offsetting the cost to maintain that level of service, freeing H D P A to, to sort of explore other creativity or other items. But then that would lead to potentially a future conversation about are we changing level of service or expectations down the road?
At least we don't have to fix the clock anymore. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would say the short term is, is kind of like what Rob asked before, is let the staff sort of figure it out. And like, you know, kind of program, what can we program within our current resources? And make some little more solid commitments. Um, and then I would say long term is, again, I think we should, we should plan downtown. We made it a council goal um to, to redo downtown as a whole. And I think we should, we should plan to make that a more professional thing that we support through city staff. And if that means, again, like a part-time person who tackles that, created district, kind of handles the city parts of it, that then works with the H D P A to handle the creative aspects and some marketing and just, so I think that's a long-term plan. But I think short term is exactly what Rob suggested, is that we just, we figure out, okay, these are the things we're gonna support. This is how we're gonna, how much we're gonna support them, and then give Mike the consistency to be able to do it.
What about the dues, though? I mean, are we gonna leave with, are, do, do we need to do an analysis of the fact that we did the dues in nineteen eighty-eight?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think send those, get, get like the three examples and then work with H D P A on those examples and see what they could find minimal.
All right. So is this clear enough about, to everybody, about what we're doing here?
Yeah, I just have one more question in the immediate.
Right.
What kind of bill is the H D P A gonna get for the watering?
Well, it's up, oh, what are we, sixteen thousand now?
A million dollars.
As of the end of uh, uh, end of May, first week of June, we were, I think it was right around eleven thousand, just under eleven thousand so far, so.
So twenty thousand.
That'll be closer, thirty.
Thirty, closer to thirty.
Just remember, the city council has already committed to contributing six thousand dollars towards the cost. So it's the difference between the total cost less the six thousand dollars the city has in the budget for that.
I know, but the city always contributes six thousand. So the H D P A is still sort of only, I mean, we.
So with that math, it would be twenty-four, unless we have another a, a conversation about sort of what that, again.
And I just, so I'm gonna remind you that we're used to paying uh thirteen-ish in round numbers, minus six thousand. Contributed from the city. I understand. I'm kind of wondering if we could meet somewhere, because right now Christmas is looking bleak.
Can we, can we see, we, we have a final, a more final number and include it in the next conversation? And see if we can meet at that point?
I guess it's just hard for me to. I can't move forward with any of the other.
We don't know enough yet, Britt. Okay, let us get a plan together. We'll work it out internally. We'll say, okay, this is staff's best idea about, A, what we can do, how much it's gonna cost, and how are we gonna divvy up the expenses between Hudpa and the city?
Well, and al- also, let me remind you, um, part of that total dollar amount we do is, is the cost of putting up the, picking up the plants, putting up the plants, taking down the plants. That's a huge labor-intensive piece that we've always just absorbed. This last couple of years, we've tracked it, included it in the.
Yes.
Okay, so more to come. Um, and, you know, I still think we'll have to do some ordinance changes here, so we need to research that with our attorneys. All right, are we okay with this? Denver, can you explain any of this to your people?
More to come.
More to come, okay, all right.
We'll, we'll come up with a proposal, we'll, we'll talk about the path relative to the due structure. And we'll also, you know, work or have further conversations around budget and, and that collaborative piece of it, so.
And, and if Denver has any burning issues, he, we still have public comments at the end of the meeting, just remember.
Um, next is Rob again, and this is the ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh eight. Adoptive Municipal Office, Offices Ordinance Update.
Command L. Command L. Control L. Trying to make it full screen for you. There we go. So, um, after, so this item came onto the, the work, um, work study a few weeks ago, and a council requested that staff go back and come up with a couple of different options. So this was included in your package. And so this, again, is related to the section of code that deals with the appointed municipal offices and sort of the org structure. Can you all read that? It was also in your packet. So it basically are two uh variations of an option for that nine, section nine B. And that would be um sort of highlighting, in, in really, in both cases, it now includes the Housing Health and Human Services Director. Um, it does remove, both, both versions removes the Public Works Superintendent. And then it basically, the, the nuance of actually between the two is the, the participation of city council. So the first one would be that those positions would be filled by written appointment of the uh, the city administrator in consultation with the mayor, subject to participation by the city council during the interview process in confirmation of council at an official meeting. That was option one. And then option two is basically the same, uh, except the, the confirmation at a meeting, but saying that's subject to participation by city council during the interview process. So those were the two options that we're bringing back to council for your discussion and direction. The hope would be if, if you uh provide direction on one, then we will come back with a drafted or amended ordinance uh for your action uh in July.
Okay. But, sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Rob, um, for the good work on this. I think it's helpful to have the two options to discuss and try to decide. Um, I'm going to um express my support for option one, um, which includes a confirmation of council uh in these very important hiring decisions of our department heads. Um, I think that, um, um, a- any department head that we're hiring, who is worth their salt, is going to want to know that they have the support of city council. And I think this is a way to demonstrate that. Um, and yes, we are responsible for budget and policy and advisory role. Um, these are the people that administer the budget. Um, these are the people that follow and live out the policies that we set. And so, um, I think it's appropriate, council has had a role, the confirmation role uh up until this point. I see no reason to change it, and so I support option one.
Questions?
Um, I'll go next. I, I think I made it clear last time, I support option two. Um, policy role is to establish the position and fund it. The executive's role is to pick the person. I don't think we should be choosing the person um or confirming. Um, I, I think a good example of where this can go wrong is, is kind of what got talked about when the mayor appointed um Judge McKinnon. Um, for a number of us, we didn't even know who the candidates were until we saw the name on the agenda of who was chosen. So none of us had an issue with, with the judge. But at that point, if we'd have raised the concern, it would have been the minimum embarrassing. And, you know, um, or it could be very complicated if we, one of us had pushed a problem with the choice. That's what I could see happening here. I was in a similar position with this all through my years on school board, where we weren't involved until it appeared on a personnel rec in front of us at a meeting, where we then had to give a thumbs up or thumbs down on someone who had already been extended an offer of employment. And I never was comfortable with it. So, um, again, we're policy, we're not execution. Um, that gets brought up all the time in other areas, so I'm not sure why we would change it in this one. I think this is why we set up a city administrator.
Looks like we got a lot of quiet people here.
Still on H D P A.
Didn't we just bring both of these forward to the council and then you decide in a meeting and make the decision? What do you want us to do?
I would say from an internal perspective, you know, either is workable, really. Um, because really, I think for both of them, it's the express involvement of council in the interview process for any of those positions that are identified, right? That's where three of you, not all of you, would have the opportunity to have a, a deeper understanding of the candidates that are coming forward. And that's probably the biggest takeaway, um, not to diminish uh council member. Councilmember McVay's uh. You know, point really about that confirmation piece of it. But the meat of it, trying to really get to what uh, councilmember Eckert was talking about it, sort of having a name come up and not have anyone know. That will still happen um, if there's a confirmation, right? Because you may not have been on the interview panel. And so there there will always be council members who don't have that same level of of knowledge of the the candidate.
Uh, you know, I don't care at this point. I mean. Go ahead.
Um, not to get overcomplicate things, I'm curious, can we? Is it possible to say um, subject to participation by the city council, and that's a panel of three correct city council members? And then um. During the interview and confirmation by those three, so it's only the confirmation by the people who were involved in the interviews, we can't do that. So it wouldn't be like a partial confirmation.
Yeah, it would be a partial confirmation, it wouldn't. If you're looking for something binding, it wouldn't be binding, because it's not a majority of council.
Yeah, so it would, because it's actually like a legislative confirmation of like the on the dais, it's officials as opposed to the interview panel, which is more. For uh informal.
But that didn't solve anything. It's always good to have creative thinking.
Mr. Noel, go ahead.
Yeah, I I would uh, support option one. I think it's uh, part of the process. Leaders come in. Um, confirm. Award the contract, you have our support. Thank you for joining the team, or we welcome you in joining the team. It's not a heart over one way or the other for me, but. I was to pick how I would want to enter uh, the city. I think that that would feel better to me.
Go ahead.
Um, with the city administrator, is that council approved? Yes, okay. Just think, because then the city administrator approves the hi- those hirings, so in a way the council is.
Right, from a hierarchical standpoint. It's the appointment of the mayor, confirmation of by council for the city administrator. And then it would be sort of a lesser. Level of review and confirmation from for the other ones. That's how it was originally proposed, but it's workable.
Yeah, honestly, I'm I'm leaning option one, but I'm also open to option two, so that's not helpful.
And and that's where the change is coming in is because we're, we've added a layer. The layer wasn't there before, so the council had a role. That we now, because we've added a layer, do we take our, do we step away from that role or not?
Yeah, um, I want to comment on that, I guess. Um, we we hired the city administrator. To provide continuity to the executive branch. In my mind, we did not hire the city administrator to take away the authority of council. That we've, this is how we have done it for, I don't know, ten, twenty years, Mayor, for some time. It's worked quite well. Um, I'm not sure why we would change it. Um, I I don't see a need to change it, and uh, I I think council needs to retain uh, its role.
Why don't we do this? Since everybody seems to be pretty uncomfortable talking about this subject. Why don't we um, just bring this to the council meeting? Next meeting, and you guys at council decide which way you want to go and vote. You have both options up there, and then that's it. Yep.
So you can, we can bring forward something um, probably where. Uh, in the body of the motion, um, the the person making the motion would select the option that would be incorporated into the the ordinance.
And and please, before this comes forward, think about which way you want to go, and so you have a pretty good idea. Because we're gonna go round and round and round over this, and and what we really need to do is a formal motion and an approval, period. Go ahead.
Let's make it a tie and send it to the mayor.
Okay, so does that sound okay for you guys? As you you've seen the options, you understand the principles. So it'll come to the council next, and you guys can decide what you want to do. There you go, okay.
You're not done with me yet.
Okay. Council meeting agenda format discussion.
Good evening. So after last week's meeting, him and I kind of started talking about. The format and if there's any changes that maybe could help the flow. And the one thing that really stood out last week was the cranium necks in the week before, where you're all turning around and looking at department heads and having a conversation. Then the public can't hear you because you're not speaking in the microphones. I'm not recording it, so. My first suggestion was perhaps we put the city ministry department head comments up in the business meeting portion of the meeting. That's also when you do have more people in the audience still here listening to hear what the department heads are reporting on. Versus once we've broke and everything's more informal, so that was the first suggestion. And then the other suggestion was streamlining the multiple opportunities for questions and concerns of the council and future agenda items, because it almost feels like. As many times as I listen to it. Questions and concerns of the council starts with basically, I want this on a future agenda, and that's what we're talking about, your concerns, I want to discuss it. When we get to future agenda items, we never talk about it unless you're reiterating what you told me at the beginning of the meeting. And I don't really get a lot of comments on additional comments and concerns. I just wanted your thoughts on streamlining the multiple attempts of adding agenda items. That, does that work?
Yeah, I I like both the suggestions a lot.
We also have board and commission reports all the time, and nobody has any board and commission reports. I mean, do you, do you want to put that together with mayor's reports and council comments and get rid of that one too?
Um, I. I know that um, y- you and Ed particularly have comments during that section, Mayor Doug Tabor does occasionally um. Uh, reg- regarding the port. Um, I guess I might like to see the, I'd like to keep that. But I I guess I would, I'd suggest we might consider adding, I don't know what you mean by outside agency, is that, is that a committee? I I'm thinking, for instance, like if our step housing committee, sometimes I I like to report, or Doug might want to report out on some things from step housing. Would that be an outside agency report?
That word can be, it could be board, you you call it board commission and outside agency.
Those liaison relationships.
I think it's important to keep it, I guess, for now anyway.
Yeah, okay. If you guys want to say anything about any of your outside relationships, that's where it goes, is board and commission reports, okay? Okay.
Hey, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Very clear, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, so continued questions and concerns of the council. Donald, speak at once. Are we okay? All right, okay. Um, and then the final thing is future agenda items. Any future agenda items? Okay, not seeing any. So uh, continued public comment. If you have comments for the council, step to the podium. You have three minutes and state your name for the record.
Thank you again for this opportunity. Um. In regards to the seven parking spaces down there, one thing I wanted to mention, it's my understanding. That the city and the Marina entered into an agreement on those spaces over thirty years ago. So this is, this has been something the Marina has had for a long time, and. Again, I want to reiterate is the the fact that if this goes away, uh, we're really, we're really gonna be hurting for parking down there. Uh, the other thing I want to mention here, and uh, with all due respect, Mayor. Uh, your your comment about uh, the usage of the parking spaces, three of those parking spaces. Are are used for employees, the other two are for permanent mortgage. And then the other two are for live aboard mortgage. So we actually have people from the Marina that are using those spots also. And the last thing I wanted to mention was the fact that the Marina realizes that parking's a problem. I mean, you can't help but. And they've done everything that they have, they can. They have a lot down here on Jensen that I'm sure you're all familiar with. And and they have opened that up for parking for the, from the public. And so, and that, and that's about all we can do, but they've been willing to do that and allow the public to park in their lot. Thanks again.
Comments from citizens?
Denver Smith, H D P A president. Counsel, thank you for taking on all of this. I know there's been some major confusion with raising dues and how to do it. One question I would have for Deb is. In our bylaws, it says multifamily housing units currently are not assessed. Uh, according to our bylaws, so that would be interesting if they were being assessed.
The the apartments are not being assessed, but the whole facility is a business license is being assessed.
Okay, so my second question then for you then is. Where does the Sophie have a business license? Because I was told they don't have a down, a Paulsbo business license, which would then make them not paying dues.
Yeah, I will have to check that out. I checked with my miscellaneous billing person and they said they were being billed. And it was, I thought it was my understanding they did, but I will double check for you.
Okay, I don't see it in our paperwork that says that I got from you guys, that it's being billed.
I will double check on that, so.
Big thing, thank you, counsel for addressing that, and the businesses. Uh, also, the businesses can. Protest the change, but it would take the biggest portion of the pain. Businesses to stop it, according to our bylaws. Uh, I can tell you that I already have enough support that that would not happen. So, food for thought.
Thanks, Denver. Continue comments from citizens.
Hello, my name's Nicole Winaka from the Port of Paulsbo again. Uh, I want to reiterate what Lauren was mentioning about the parking and add a couple of additional points. I would like to offer a little more context to the Port of Paulsbo's parking situation, as well as a correction to the mayor's statement regarding the Port of Paulsbo's employee parking spaces at the head of E dock. Only three of those spaces in that law are designated for employees. Two spaces designated for permanent mortgage and two for live aboard. One out of those seven spots is that's in question is already designated for sole use by the Paulsbo Police Department. I'd also like to mention that one of our highly valued employees is disabled, so walking to and from the Jensen law on a daily basis would create a difficult obstacle for us. I myself am a single mother and my daughter attends Paulsbo School District, uh, so having ready access to my vehicle is vital for me. Additionally, I'm an active customer in Paulsbo. I shop locally for my clothes, if you can't tell. Um, I get my groceries here, home supplies. I also frequent purchase, uh, frequently purchase my lunches from local restaurants. Sometimes six days a week when I'm working overtime, which has been a lot lately. Another major concern of mine is that changing these spaces into public parking would inhibit that accessibility for emergency vehicles, such as the fire department and E M T vehicles. Port of Paulsbo does experience emergency situations and needs clearance for those emergency vehicles. For example, just today. Uh, there are several citizens who decided to disobey the disobey the many signs posted around the port. Uh, that jumping off of our docks is strictly prohibited for numerous safety reasons. Today, we required assistance from the police, uh, from the fire department to help clear these citizens off our docks. Fortunately, no humans were harmed today. Unfortunately, they did scare off a mother harbor seal, forcing her to abandon her newborn baby. I called the Department of Fish and Wildlife to report the situation, and when I leave this meeting. I will be driving back to the Port of Paulsbo, utilizing my employee parking space and checking to see if the orphan is still managing to keep its head above water, or if I need to mark it as a documented loss of life. I'm volunteering my personal time to do so, and although it may seem to some that it would be a small obstacle for me to walk from the Jensen lot rather than from the head of the E dock lot. It is valuable time that me, as a single mama, is missing for spending with my family. One last point for the day, the Port of Paulsbo is already providing, again, substantial amount of parking spaces in our Jensen parking lot for public paid parking. Although I am fairly new to the Port of Paulsbo, I uh, feel very heavily interested in protecting our port's well-being. So on top of my concerns discussed earlier in this meeting, these are some of the concerns that I believe should be considered when making any decision. Regarding the Port of Paulsbo's downtown parking lot. Again, thank you all for your time.
Comments from citizens? Anybody else? Okay, uh, Mayor and Council comments? Anything? Go ahead.
I'll just say to the kind of people that waited for the, to discuss the port parking, I'm meeting, I sent an email to meet with Jade, and hopefully we can come together and discuss. Solutions, ideas, thoughts, and then I can bring them back to council and we can move and have progress on those kind of topics.
Okay, any other council comments? Is there a second?
Third.
Fourth, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.